Good morning, ladies and gentlemen. If I could ask you to take a seat. We'll begin the council meeting in one minute. If members of council could take a seat. Thank you. Good morning, ladies and gentlemen, and welcome to the council meeting of the 22nd of November 2017. For those who are able to, would you please rise for a moment of personal reflection and remain standing for the singing of our national anthem? If you could remain standing, we'll ask our colleague and friend councillor George DeRouze to introduce our very special guest who will sing the national anthem. Councillor DeRouze, s'il vous plaît.
Thank you. Good morning, Mr. Mayor. And we have a special guest with us this morning. We have Kayleigh Stiles. She is 13 years old and lives in the rural village of Greeley in Asgard Ward. And also, we have her parents with us in the audience, Wayne and Catherine Stiles. Kayleigh is currently attending Canterbury High School, and she's enrolled in the vocal programme. Kayleigh has been singing, acting, and performing since she was six. She very much enjoys performing pop and musical theatre. She has sang anthems several times at sporting events such as the Arawa 67th and the Arawa Fury. She recently worked with music producers and now have four original songs to her name. Two of the songs have been released on iTunes and Spotify. She has also participated in La Voix Junior in Montreal, which is live singing competition before celebrity judges similar to the one at The Voice. Kayleigh is extremely talented and loves performing for audiences both young and old. Without further delay, please help me welcome Ms. Kayleigh Stiles to sing the Canadian anthem today.
Well, Kayleigh, thank you very much for sharing your beautiful talent with us today. It's an honour to invite Dawn Winchester to the podium for this Council City Builder Award. Dawn, if you'd like to come forward.
I'd like to invite Dawn Winchester to the podium for this Council City Builder Award presentation.
And I'm also pleased to welcome Barhaven Ward councillor Jan Harder and Gloucestershire South Nupian councillor Michael Kakish to join us for the presentation. Jan and Michael. I'd like to also extend a warm welcome to the family and friends of Dawn who are here today. Dawn has worked tirelessly for the seniors community in Barhaven and has shown inspiring leadership as the president of the Barhaven Seniors Council. Dawn Winchester and his wife Marilyn have been active in the community since moving here from Calgary in 2011. We had a meeting back in December 2013, councillor Harder and myself, Dawn, and seniors from the community, that discussed the need for programmes and services for older adults in the area. This was a productive start, and in 2014, Dawn became the co-founder and president of the Barhaven Seniors Council. This is a popular and active organisation in the community that is now a registered charity with almost 600 members, which is remarkable. Dawn is being recognised with the Mayor's City Builder Award for his energy, leadership, and enthusiasm in delivering programmes and services to seniors. Barhaven seniors now enjoy Bridge and Uker Clubs, social activities, chair exercises, and other outings close to their homes. Dawn's motivation and leadership in steering this group to success has given members new friendships and a sense of community through weekly activities and the best potlucks in the neighbourhood. It's my honour to acknowledge these contributions with the City Builder Award. This award recognises people who have demonstrated an extraordinary commitment to making our city a better place today and for the future through outstanding volunteerism or exemplary action. Dawn's leadership and organisational skills were honed over more than 30 years, working at the Calgary Board of Education through his work with Little League Baseball and as the co-founder and VP of the Alberta Amateur Baseball Council. Now as the senior adviser of the project steering committee for the Barhaven Community and Cultural Centre, Dawn's dream is to have a quality new centre for programmes and services for seniors in Barhaven. I'd like to take an opportunity, Dawn, to thank you for your many contributions to your community and the broader city.
I would like to take this opportunity to thank Dawn for his many contributions to the community and the entire city.
Harder and councillor Kakish represent parts of Barhaven. We'd like to co-present this certificate to you, and thank you for the tremendous work. Keep it up. Congratulations.
Thank you, Mayor Watson, and councillors and staff. First, I want to thank Mayor Watson, councillor Harder, councillor Kakish for presenting the Mayor's City Builder Award to me this morning. It does mean a lot to Marilyn and I to know that we are in some way helping to make a contribution to the community that we chose upon retiring. We live in an exciting time in history, witnessing the need for a major paradigm shift in how we plan our communities. One of my goals, Mayor Watson, is to see the city of Ottawa become a national leader in planning for multi-generational communities. This would enable residents of all ages and abilities to lead active and fulfilling lives within their chosen community, such as Barhaven, rather than having to move elsewhere for services as the age. Councillors Harder and Kakish have helped to bring land and project developers to the table in order to work with city planning and others so that we can together explore potential partnership options. And I very much appreciate all their counsel and continuing support. MP Arya, whose executive assistant is here today, has facilitated meetings for me with federal departments to identify potential funding sources for the Barhaven Seniors Council and the Barhaven Community and Cultural Centre. In closing, I'd like to thank you, Mayor Watson, for your continued support of the Barhaven seniors, for the opportunity to say a few words to council, and we hope that you'll attend our next potluck very soon. Thank you very much.
Well, congratulations again, Dawn, and thank you for the good work you do. A roll call, please, Madam Deputy Clerk.
Councillor Manette.
What's up?
Councillor Midic.
Here.
Councillor Harder.
Here.
Councillor Wilkinson.
Present.
Councillor O'Shaughnessy.
Present.
Councillor Cadri.
Present.
Councillor Taylor.
Here.
Councillor Shirelli.
Here.
Councillor Egley.
Here.
Councillor Deans.
Here.
Councillor Tierney.
Present.
Councillor Fleury.
Si.
Councillor Newsbom.
Here.
Councillor McKennie.
Present.
Councillor Leeper.
Present.
Councillor Brockington.
Here.
Councillor Chernyschenko.
Present.
Councillor Cloutier.
Present.
Councillor Blay.
Present.
Councillor DeRouze.
Here.
Councillor Moffat.
Here.
Councillor Kakish.
Present.
Councillor Hubley.
Here.
Mayor Watson.
You see?
Le corrommette tient Monsieur Lemarre.
You'll see. Adoption de process visible confirmation the minutes of the 8th of November 2017 carried. Declarations of interest, including those originally rising from prior meetings, declaration de conflit d'intérêt. Councillor Leeper, please.
Thank you, Chair. I, councillor Jeff Leeper, declare a potential deemed pecuniary interest on item three Audit Committee Report 13 Office of the Auditor General, report on audit follow-ups and detailed audit follow-up reports, as my spouse chaired the Board of Directors of the Ottawa School of Speech and Drama at the time that organisation ceased operations with an outstanding debt to the city. That is one of the items in the detailed audit follow-up reports.
Thank you, councillor. Councillor Rick Shirelli.
I, councillor Rick Shirelli, declare a potential deemed indirect pecuniary interest in agenda item eight Planning Committee Report 54A Official Plan Amendment and Zoning Bylaw Amendment 325, 327, and 333 Montreal Road, 334 Mau 4 Street, and 273 Saint Anne Avenue, as my daughter is employed by Shepherds of Good Hope, an organisation that is in the same funding bracket as the Salvation Army, the applicant in the report mentioned herein, and could see its operations affected by changes associated with the application.
Are there any other conflicts? No communications as presented. Reports, integrity report, commissaire à l'intégrité, Mr. Marlowe... Oh, I apologize. Councillor Kakish, please.
The report from the integrity commissioner entitled Integrity Commissioner 2017 Annual Report, the report from the Ottawa Board of Health entitled Ontario's Health System Transformation: Response to the Minister's Expert Panel Report, Audit Committee Report 13 Finance and Economic Development Committee Report 29, Planning Committee Report 54 Transit Commission Report 15, and the report from the city clerk and solicitors office entitled Summary of Oral and Written Public Submissions for Items Subject to Bill 73 Explanation Requirements at the City Council Meeting of November 8, 2017 Be Received and Considered, and that pursuant to subsections 35.5 and 35.6 of procedural bylaw 2016-377, council receive and consider planning report 54A, and that the petitions listed on the agenda with respect to the closure of John Wood Street and with respect to Salvation Army proposal be received.
Motion? Carried. No regrets to date. Reports, Mr. Marlowe is in attendance. Does anyone have any questions on the 2017 Annual Report? No. Okay. Received. Item number two, Ontario's Health System Transformation: Response to the Minister's Expert Panel Report Transformation du système de santé entérienne, réponse au rapport au comité ministériel d'experts. Dr. Levy is here for any questions. Are there any questions on the report? No. Carried. Committee reports, Audit Committee Report number 13 Office of the Auditor General, councillor Leeper has left his seat. Does anyone have any questions or comments on the auditor's report?
Yes.
Okay, we'll come back to that then. Item number four, Office of the Auditor General, 2018 Work Plan. Carried. Dissent by councillor Deans. City of Ottawa, participation in the National Capital Commission's commercially confidential negotiations for the redevelopment of Le Breton Flats. Participation... So a hold. Item number six, demande d'approbation de l'expropriation de terrain requis dans le cadre de projet de lien de Canada Sud, application for approval to expropriate lands for the purpose of the Canada South Link project pursuant to section four of the Expropriations Act. Any questions? Carried. Item number seven, Smart City 2.0, Ottawa Smart City Strategy, ville intelligente 2.0. Hold. Planning Committee Report number 54A, we'll come back to and deal with it first. Bulk Consent Agenda, does anyone wish to remove anything from the Bulk Consent Agenda? No, on the Bulk Consent Agenda as presented. Carried. Planning Committee Report number 54A, rapport de nos cinquante-quatre à ce comité de l'urbanisme. We have a number of motions. Councillor Harder is going to start with some opening comments, and we'll ask Rick O'Connor to give us some legal direction, and then we will deal with the motions as I've received them, and then with the main report. Councillor Harder, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. As Chair of Planning Committee, I wanted to say a few words about the Salvation Army application, which, as you all know, is seeking amendments to the official plan, the zoning bylaw, and the Montreal Road District Secondary Plan to permit a residential care facility, shelter, and surface parking on their property on Montreal Road. As you saw by the number of people who attended Planning Committee last week, there is a lot of interest in the proposal. While there are different views about the proposed facility, I want to thank the community members who have been so active and engaged on this file. I'd like to take this opportunity to remind everyone that what is before council today is a recommendation from Planning Committee based on a recommendation from our city planning staff. At the end of the day, our decision must relate to the land use of the proposed application and must be based on sound land use planning principles. Concerns regarding the neighbourhood or social impact of this development are appropriate, but must relate to the land use and not the users of the proposal. For example, members of council may consider the social or neighbourhood impact of allowing 350 additional occupants into the neighbourhood, but not social or neighbourhood impact of allowing impoverished single men into the neighbourhood. Accordingly, I have spoken to the mayor, and he has confirmed that questions relating to the following are out of order on this issue. Any potential federal, provincial, or municipal funding for this applicant, any alternative programmes for potential users, the activities or characteristics of the potential users including smoking, criminal behaviour, and age, sorry, and drug use, the city's 10-year housing and homelessness plan, and the housing first programme model. Once the mayor finishes his introductory remarks, we would like to ask the city's legal staff to come forward and briefly clarify some of the procedural and legal issues related to council's consideration of this item. They provided some important comments to the Planning Committee that the mayor and I feel are important for all members of council to be aware of, and I want to thank all members of council, for 98% of you attended a good portion of the three days that we heard from the delegations. I would like to close by formally thanking both the staff from the planning and legal services for their efforts to date and for their professionalism on what has been an emotionally charged file. And I'd like to especially thank Aaron O'Connell, the lead planner on this file, and Doug James, the manager of Development Review, for their diligence and thoughtful approach to this application. I know it has not always been easy, and I wanted to take a moment to recognise everyone who has been involved, from communications, legal services, certainly Melody Daphne and her team at Clerks, and my own office staff. Your professionalism has not gone unnoticed. Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor.
Great, thank you very much, councillor Harder. Mr. O'Connor, please.
Well, thank you, Mr. Mayor, and I'll try to be brief because I believe the Chair has encapsulated a number of the legal issues, but I will reiterate a couple of them. And I'd like to give a sort of brief overview to members of council on three issues that arose over the last several weeks with regards to this particular application. The first being the implications of the 2008 council report on a similar matter in Ward 12. The second being, as the Chair has described, the parameters, the legal parameters, and the decision-making process that council should be following in this type of instance. And finally, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to end with a few comments with regards to the Ontario Human Rights Code and the Charter of Rights and Freedoms. With regards to the first issue on the 2008 report, Mr. Mayor, I issued a memo on November 2nd with regards to this as a result of a notice of motion that was given at council at that point in time. And essentially, what councillors were asking us was whether or not any of the recommendations approved by the 2006 and 2010 city council as part of that 2008 report, which was with regards to an interim control bylaw in Ward 12, would in any way, shape, or form prohibit or impede the approval of the committee or staff recommendation with regards to what is before members today? The short answer to that is no, there are no such impediments. And in line with that, we did draw a number of conclusions, including the following. The current city council is not bound by policy decisions of a past council. City council's current official plan allows for the creation of shelters. There's no provision in the city's comprehensive zoning bylaw or official plan that prohibits shelters on traditional or arterial main streets. There's no maximum shelter cap highlighted in the official plan. There are no prohibitions or restrictions on shelters in the Montreal Road District Secondary Plan, and the site-specific zoning being requested in this instance addresses the relocation as set out in the planning report of an existing shelter and is therefore not a creation of a new shelter, and staff believe that has no impact with regards to the limit of four shelters in Ward 12. Second, Mr. Mayor, with regards to the parameters of the decision-making, and as the Chair alluded to earlier, there is a concern, and Legal has raised this, that if there is a decision ultimately founded by either the OMB or any other tribunal or court, that this council founded its decision on this planning application on non-planning considerations, and that would include the user of the facilities in this case, the funding for this process, the programmes that are set out therein, and any of council's policies with regards to housing and whatnot, that would actually do a great deal of damage to our case in defending this matter in things like the Ontario Municipal Board. In doing so, Mr. Mayor, we're clear that we have not in Legal's mind said that social and neighbourhood impact is not a valid planning consideration. In fact, to the opposite, we were very clear on a number of occasions, saying that is something that members of the committee and council could take into hand. We also reiterated that appropriate land and planning use does not confine itself to the boundaries of this property. We talked about, you can talk about the roads, you can talk about sidewalks, you can talk about things around the property, so it doesn't end at the property line. And again, to reiterate, the planning law regulates land use and not the users of the land, as well as the programmes or funding applications or anything else of the particular applicant in this case. And with regards to that, Mr. Mayor, that leads us to my concerns with regards to human rights and zoning issues. We indicated to members of committee last week, and will do so again, that human rights and tribunals, as well as courts across the country, in exercising their authority on planning and zoning matters by municipalities are required to ensure that they do not infringe on rights guaranteed under either the Ontario Human Rights Code or, in fact, the Canadian Charter of Rights and Freedoms. And in fact, the Ontario Human Rights Code is, in fact, for constitutional purposes, supersedes the statutory obligations under the Planning Act. Whereas reference to various cases, and I won't bore you with those things, but I would draw for your conclusion, in conclusion, sorry, that the Ministry of Municipal Affairs has reinforced the importance of human rights and added this language to key resources, the first being the Municipal Councillor's Guide for 2014 in section three, where they refer to the Ontario Human Rights Code, and for the provincial purposes, the provincial policy statement, section 4.6 in 2014, which now reiterates that under the Planning Act, it states that provincial policy statement, quote, "shall be implemented in a way that is consistent with the Ontario Human Rights Code and the Charter of Rights and Freedoms." So, Mr. Mayor, that's my procedural overview with regards to the matter before council this morning. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. Well, we're going to introduce motions first. Clarification, okay?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'm just a bit confused between the Chair's introduction, where she said that questions related to things like the housing and homelessness plan, other social impacts would be deemed out of order, and the city solicitor's comment just now that said that social impacts are very much in order. So those seem to me to be diametrically opposed, and I'm wondering if the city solicitor can provide a little bit clarity. He just said something along the lines of social impacts are indeed a legitimate element of council's consideration of this application, which seems to contradict the Chair's earlier comment.
With respect, Mr. Mayor, I don't think it contradicts that it has to be social impacts related to the community or the neighbourhood that are related to land use. And when we talk about land use, we talk about the fact that is this application going to be something that is going to have impediments with regards to transportation? And Planning Committee was very good on that. They asked a series of questions with regards to if there is a truck coming once a week, I think the term was, to provide supplies for this particular facility. Is it an 18-wheeler? Is it a small panel truck? Will it have difficulty getting down the roads? Where is it going to be approached? What time is it going to be approaching? Will it affect children crossing for schools and other matters? Those are impacts, social impacts on the community, but they are not about funding or the programmes that this applicant may be involved in.
Mr. Chair, on page 70 of the staff report, the staff explicitly referenced the housing and homelessness plan. So they are balancing the number of shelters within Ward 12 against the applicant's criteria for site selection, which correspond with the requested site, as well as the council-approved our 10-year plan, A Home for Everyone, 2014 to 2024, which is otherwise known as the Housing and Homelessness Plan. So can I safely assume that, given that staff have specifically raised this in document four of the staff report, that questions will be in order in response to that statement by staff? Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, that is in reference to information purposes only and was not taken into consideration of the decisions and the recommendations that were made in the staff report.
Okay, so we're now going to go on to motions. We have a number of motions. Councillor Fleury has a deferral motion, so this will be the first one that we deal with as according to the procedural bylaw. Councillor Fleury, if you'd like to introduce the motion, please.
Monsieur Lemarre. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I learnt a lot on the official plan these past few months, and I noticed the important section in the plan. Two six point three states, applications for official plan amendments of citywide significance will be considered providing the following criteria are met, and this is pulled from the website, from our city website. A, the applicant policies in section four, B, the application information and report listed in policy two I through, and this is exactly how it's posted on the website, XXX. Above all of these submitted, A, C, additional information regarding the appropriateness of the proposed amendments, including a citywide analysis and evaluation of the alternatives has been submitted, and whereas there should be a study of alternate sites, such as a facility, and council should have a copy of such an analysis prior to decision, therefore be resolved that council defer consideration of this application until such time as the applicant provides an analysis of the other available lands and potential sites to Planning Committee and Council.
Do you want to speak to it now, councillor?
So, Mr. Mayor, can you clarify, are we going to go through all of the motions?
Yeah, we have to deal with this one first because it's a deferral, and we'll deal with them in sequential order as we receive them. So floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So the Salvation Army did say that they hired a consultant to review different site selections based on their criteria. Those criteria were made available, but the sites that were presented, other than the one that is in front of us, was never provided. So we don't have a list of the efforts and the sites that were included. We don't know if the analysis was appropriate. We don't know if, as you know, members of my community did use the criteria and look at the other side. at the other sites, and we don't know how that compares. So, there's a lot of information. I know members of council have said what other locations. I think this is a transparent way of going about the matter in looking at lands that were provided from the consultant study to the applicant.
Does anyone else wish to speak on deferral? So, on deferral, yays and nays, please.
Councillor Alshantiri?
No.
Councillor Brockington?
No.
Councillor Taylor?
No.
Councillor Deans?
Yes.
Conseil Fleury?
Oui.
Councillor Giroux?
Non.
Councillor Cadri?
Non.
Councillor Harder?
No.
Councillor Wilkinson?
Non.
Conseil Cloutier?
Non.
Councillor Egley?
Non.
Councillor Moffett?
Non.
Conseil Blé?
Non.
Councillor McKennie?
Yes.
Conseil Manette?
Non.
Councillor Shureli? Councillor Mydick?
Non.
Councillor Kakish?
Non.
Councillor Chernyschenko?
Yes.
Councillor Hubley?
Oh.
Councillor Neusbaum?
Yes.
Councillor Tierney?
Non.
Councillor Leaper?
Oui.
Mayor Watson?
No.
Seven yays, seventeen nays.
So, our next motion that we have is from Councillor Flurry, seconded by Councillor McKennie. Councillor Flurry, if you'd like to introduce the motion, si vous plaît.
Monsieur Mayor, so the motion in front of us is, we are dealing with a tough matter, and I think it's important to reaffirm a commitment to the Salvation Army from a general standpoint. So, the motion reads as follow: "Whereas the Salvation Army is a long-standing service provider, and whereas the work that the organisation does is needed to help our most vulnerable residents in Ottawa, therefore be it resolved that we recognise the value the Salvation Army brings, the importance of the services they offer, and we applaud their work in Ottawa." I hope that's a unanimous vote.
Does anyone wish to speak on this motion? Is it not on the screen? Okay, we'll just hold for a moment. Can someone maybe give Councillor Brockington a hard copy of the motion?
He can take mine.
I think it's... So, Councillor Kakish, do you wish to speak to this motion?
I just had a question because yesterday, Leanne circulated the motion...
Could you speak up, please? It's hard to hear.
Yesterday, a list of the motions was circulated, so has that changed, or are we going through the same order?
Yeah. Councillor Flurry has brought these two forward this morning.
Okay.
So, the rest, I believe, are all the same, deputy clerk? It's on the screen now.
Okay, thanks.
And the rest are the same. So, moved by Councillor Flurry, seconded by Councillor McKennie, on support for the Salvation Army. Carried. The next motion is by Councillor Flurry, seconded by Councillor Neusbaum, with respect to surface parking. Councillor Flurry?
Messieurs, Monsieurs, Maire, this one is very important to us...
Do you want to just read the motion, councillor?
Oh, yes, sir. Whereas the Montreal Road Secondary Plan does not permit surface parking on lots along Montreal Road, whereas the report recommends the adoption of an official plan amendment to permit surface parking on the subject land, and whereas the report also recommends the approval of zoning bylaw amendments to permit a development that would have parking spaces located in the front yard, save and except within the first 13 metres back from the lot line abiding Montreal Road. Therefore be resolved that in Document 3, details recommended zoning of the report be amended by replacing the text "a minimum of 13 metres from the front line" with "a minimum of 26 metres from the front line," and be it further resolved that there are no further notice pursuant to Section 34, 17 of the Planning Act. So, maybe I can introduce the matter?
Yep, go ahead. Here, the floor.
Sorry about that. So, the matter in front of us is, the Salvation Army has proposed a surface parking off of Montreal Road for the use of their thrift store, which is not part of the application in front of us. We've asked of a recent application at the Wabano Centre that the parking be deemed, that the parking be underground at the Wabano Centre, which is a similar condition, so to meet the goals of Montreal as a main street. It doesn't impede the operations of the Salvation Army at this location, but it does meet our goals of main streets. And again, it'd be weird for us to grant a parking for a neighbouring property, although it is the same applicant. We don't know over time what that use might change to.
Merci beaucoup. Councillor Leaper, please.
Chair, thank you very much. I do support this absolutely. It is critical. We've been asked to think about this application in light of a very restrictive land use argument. Is a shelter a suitable use on a traditional main street? And to that end, we have to think about how we think about main streets writ large overall. How do we expect traditional main streets in this city to develop? And one of the last things I think any councillor around this table wants to see for their main streets is that we just perpetuate the strip mall model of buildings that are set well back from the street with surface parking in front. If we accept that surface parking is okay here, I think we're going to have a really difficult time saying that surface parking isn't okay in our other traditional main streets. Let's stand up today for the vision that we have for the tightly knit, active, safe, pedestrian-friendly, traditional main streets that we're trying to build and support Councillor Flurry's motion. Thank you.
Okay. Next, I'd ask Councillor Brockington, please.
Thank you, Your Worship and Good Morning. If, to questions to staff, if this passes, if the Flurry motion passes, then there's no on-site parking, at least fronting Montreal Road? That's correct. And if so, where would thrift store customers park?
Mr. Mayor, staff do not support this motion. This prevents the thrift store from meeting their parking requirements, so it would put them in non-conformity. Parking spaces have already been eliminated on this site, and Mr. James would be able to provide further details on this, but it is not staff's recommendation to support this motion.
Okay. Councillor referenced the Wabano Centre, which I was not a member of council at that time. Can I just have a better understanding? They apparently were forced to provide underground parking. How many spots are underground, and what was the rationale used in that case versus the proposal before us?
Mr. Mayor, certainly each site has to be viewed on its own merits, and each site has specific requirements depending on their application. Mr. James is going to elaborate.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. With respect to the, actually, with respect to the policies of the official plan, the intent is not to have parking right adjacent to the street, such as similar situation next to the Gabriel's Pizza next door. The idea is to have it back, as proposed by the applicant on the subject property. There is to be 13 metres of landscape space. This 13 metres provides, first, three things: one, a safety area for vehicles coming in off of Montreal Road, stopping and queuing for vehicles parking out, or leading and backing out of this area. As well, the landscaping meets the intent of the official plan, as it provides an area where the parking could be hidden, behind the landscaping, behind the buildings that are there on either side of the subject property, as well as, should those properties develop to their full potential in the future, the, this parking would be hidden even further. And thirdly, with respect to the thrift store, it is actually part of this application right now. It is being, property of the thrift store is being rezoned with respect to a loading space. But should it be severed in the future, as of right now and in the future, it would still require parking. It needs a minimum of nine parking spaces. And the traditional main street zoning allows this parking to be provided off-site. So, the best part, or the best location for this parking, for the thrift store, from a planning perspective, is right where it is being proposed today. So, that is why we recommend that this motion not be carried.
Just to confirm, the thrift store customers today park on Montreal Road?
Mr. James, why can't you follow?
Mr. Mayor, they can park where the Concord Hotel is today because of Section 197.10 of the traditional main streets, or they could park, of course, with respect to public parking on streets in accordance with the time that's located along this portion of Montreal Road.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councillor Brockington. Councillor Wilkinson, please.
Just on a similar vein to staff, I've been to the Wabano Centre, and I just couldn't see how they could ever have had any surface parking, because they use the whole, pretty well, the whole site. So, I think it's quite a different matter. They weren't forced to go underground. That's the only way they could provide parking, I believe. Is that correct?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, that is correct. Parking could be provided, as I mentioned, on main streets in a surface area, as long as, I mentioned, it's not predominantly right between the building and the street. So, if the building, of course, takes up the majority of the site and you still do have required parking, the alternative is to go underground, yes.
So, this is a different matter at the other site. You're saying right now, the Salvation Army store doesn't have enough room on its own site for parking. That's why they go next door, which is right along Montreal Road. That has parking right along Montreal. I've taken a look at it, and it seems to me they're already parking along the street.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, there is surface parking along the street, as city parking allowed.
When I looked at the memo you sent, by putting it 13 metres back, you're actually putting it further back than they're parking right now, but not as far as the bylaw would say normally. But the main parking lot is, I believe, 52 metres back? I try to remember the numbers and things. Is that, so the main parking is behind? This is just a little bit near the front for the thrift store?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. The intent of the official plan, as I mentioned, is not to have parking between the building and the street, but to have it to the back, as the councillor has mentioned. And by having the 13 metres of landscaping there, it is hidden, and it meets that intent. And the rest of the parking, of course, is provided further back into the site, which is even further hidden. But with the buildings on either side of the parking that's allowed and that landscaping, it meets that intent of not being out on the street in a main street.
So, if we didn't do this, then Salvation Army would continue with its present status, which is non-conformity for parking, because it does not have it on-site now. It would still not have it on-site if we did not make this approval, which would mean there's further congestion on Montreal Road for parking, which is already pretty bad.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, there would be a further reduction in parking, which would create more of a shortfall. And I must say that that was one of the issues that came up during the public consultation in the, at Planning Committee, was the lack of parking that's being provided. So, it would further exacerbate that, yes.
So, basically, what you're trying to come up with, something practical to reduce pressure on Montreal Road for parking, as opposed to giving them a special, because if they didn't, we didn't approve this. It doesn't stop the development from going ahead, because it's not parking for this development that's involved at all. It's just the parking for the thrift stores, which would just continue then to have, wouldn't change its status. That's the way I'm looking at it. Is that, is that correct?
It would, it would reduce the amount of parking on-site, and the thrift store does need a minimum of nine parking spaces, which it would have to, it couldn't use the street parking for that. It would need to have them next door, such as being proposed. So, they would still need to have the required parking on, let's say, the Salvation Army site. And by reducing these spaces, you're eliminating those, and it puts more pressure on the street parking.
Is this big, the parking they have at the site next door to them, part of their original approvals, or is that just being convenient? Because I'm trying to think, if non-conforming rights usually mean you can continue doing what you're doing now, even if you don't meet the bylaw? And that, that building's been there for a long time.
Yeah. Mr. Mayor, it's actually all one site right now, so their parking is being provided on-site.
So, they're just keeping that one, it's still owned in the same ownership then?
Yes, right, the application right now, it's all under one ownership, and as I mentioned, the required parking is, of course, required. And even if it's severed in the future, it's still, they have to come up with this required parking.
Okay, I understand now. Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Councillor Wilkinson. Councillor Neusbaum, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just a question to staff on this motion. So, it's been said that the purpose of the traditional main street prohibition on surface parking is to try, well, is to prohibit parking between building and the street. In this case, the proposed, let's call it, front parking lot is between the building and the street, correct?
Mr. Mayor, the intent of the official plan is not, is to have buildings being the predominant features along traditional main streets. The traditional main street policy does allow for driveways, and it does allow, in apparent plan, for surface parking. As I mentioned, the idea is to hide this, and having it in the back meets that intent, as well as having that 13 metres of landscaping in front also meets that intent with respect to official plan policies and parking on main streets.
So, it's interesting to hear the observation or the suggestion that landscape meets the intent of the traditional main street zoning. So, the suggestion is, is that although there's a prohibition of surface parking within a traditional main street zone, if one can hide the parking, so if one puts a row of hedges up and so that you don't see the cars, it sounds to me that that would satisfy the department. So, it's, what I heard is landscaping can meet the intent of this zoning bylaw. So, in cases where an applicant can hide surface parking, which takes place between the road and the building, the department's view is that would satisfy the intent of the traditional main street prohibition.
Mr. Mayor, in this instance, there's a narrow frontage along Montreal Road, which will have the driveway. The official plan for traditional main streets says that you can have frontages, you can have driveways leading in, of course, and that there can be landscaping. Again, the intent is to hide that parking, as opposed to a situation next door where you have, like, say, the Gabriel's Pizza, where the parking is right in front of the building. It is the department's position that, with respect to this proposal, the parking being set back 13 metres, as, again, it's safe, because there's a throat there for queuing and some traffic conflicts, and meets that intent, and it will be hidden behind the buildings that are on either side of this narrow throat that comes in, as well, when those buildings, say, redevelop in the future, it will be even more hidden.
So, the staff report says that the typical depth of a traditional main street site is 30 metres. In this case, the rear parking lot is far beyond that. And so, I don't have any objection in this case for the rear parking lot, because that is beyond the typical depth of 30 metres of the site. Councillor Flurry's motion would seem to ask us to ensure that we don't have surface parking within 27 metres or 26 metres, which is below the typical traditional main street site. So, given that there is a parking lot in the rear, did staff explore with the applicant the opportunity to satisfy the parking spaces required through both street parking and the rear parking lot?
Mr. Mayor, to clarify, the surface parking that's being provided at the rear of the building is specific to the requirements for the shelter and the residential care facility. So, there's a bylaw requirement that needs to be met in order for those parking spaces. There is a reduction being sought through this application for parking spaces associated with that shelter and residential care facility, but that is the sole purpose of those parking spaces in the rear. They're not to accommodate the thrift store facility at the front of Montreal Road.
But presuming the applicant wanted to provide a space or two for clients coming to the thrift store, would they be permitted under the zoning bylaw to do that?
The traditional main street designation allows for parking on a separate lot, so it's not specific whether it be at the front or at the rear.
Excellent. That's very helpful. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor. Councillor McKennie, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just want to go back to what we heard the past three days, last week, at Planning Committee, from, from folks. And one of the things that we did hear from the applicant, I think it was when FOTEN was up, was that part of their rationale for why this traditional main street should allow for a shelter as opposed to others was that it was a transit-intensive corridor, as is, I think they used Montreal Road and Rideau Street as the two examples. Is that your recollection?
My recollection, Mr. Mayor, I'm not sure of the exact words the applicant used, but certainly Montreal Road is a transit-priority corridor in our official plan.
So, we've got a transit-priority corridor. That's why... That's why, that's part of the rationale for allowing us to go up against our traditional main street uses. And yet, we're here talking about additional parking. And I'll tell you, the other thing that I heard was not so, from, from residents, was not their concern about staff parking, because the staff parking is all in the back. They were, it was the concern about that front parking and what would, you know, so I think that to, today, not to accept that we should not have this front yard parking that would simply be for clients of the thrift store, which again, is on a transit-priority corridor. I think we have to expect people to actually take transit. I don't know why on a traditional main street we would be allowing extra parking where we don't, where we don't require it. So I'm going to support Councillor Fleury's motion based on the fact that it is, you know, we are traditional main streets. We cannot start scraping away at the, the very features that make them livable, walkable main streets. Thank you.
So Councillor Fleury forgot one question he'd like, so we'll go back to him on this one occasion, Councillor.
Mr. Mayor. So a question to staff, the applicant, so you're using a weird argument to say the, the application for the thrift store building is at play because they're asking for a loading zone, which isn't really in play, it's on the side of St. Anne's Street. Is that correct? That the loading area that you're talking about is on St. Anne's and not on Montreal Road?
Mr. Mayor, the, actually, the, the loading space is there, but the application before council today includes the rezoning of, of that store. It's part of the application and it's part of the staff report and it's part of the consideration by council today.
So what are those considerations for that location?
The exception that forms part of the zoning details, Mr. Mayor, as part of this application, is to allow for the loading zone to be located up to zero metres of the property on the thrift store.
So only because, that site's in play only because there's a loading area? And for that, we're giving it a chance to gain parking on their, on next, next site for that use? It's like a weird, a weird way to look at it, isn't it?
Mr. Mayor, the, the thrift store needs parking. It needs a minimum of nine parking spaces. It's a requirement in the zoning bylaw. And as I mentioned, they are allowed to provide parking next door, such as proposed here. And elimination of these parking spaces could result in the thrift store not having the parking required by the zoning bylaw. So they, they get to use next door, for example, because of the provisions already allowed in the zoning bylaw.
So, Mr. Mayor, just to reassure members of council, a few years ago, we removed the pay-and-display on Montreal Road because it adds such low usage. There was no one parking on-street on Montreal Road. So we removed the pay-and-display. There's tonnes of capacity along the corridor, so I hope that we follow our regulations on, on main streets and not allow for this front yard parking to be permitted.
Okay, so we have Councillor Fleury's motion. Yays and nays, please.
Councillor El Shantiri?
No.
Councillor Brockington?
No.
Councillor Taylor?
No.
Councillor Deans?
Yes.
Conseil Fleury?
Oui.
Councillor DeRouze?
Non.
Councillor Cadri?
Non.
Councillor Harder?
No.
Councillor Wilkinson?
No.
Conseil Cloutier?
No.
Councillor Egley?
No.
Councillor Moffett?
Non.
Councillor Blay?
No.
Councillor McKenney?
Yes.
Conseil Manette?
Non.
Councillor Mydic?
Non.
Councillor Kakish?
Non.
Councillor Chernyschenko?
Non.
Councillor Hubley?
Non.
Councillor Newsbaum?
Yes.
Councillor Tierney?
Non.
Councillor Leeper?
Oui.
Mayor Watson?
Non.
I have 18 nays, 5 yays. And, Mr. Mayor, to correct the record on the previous vote, the division was 6 yays to 17 nays.
Okay, thank you. Our next motion is by Councillor Cloutier, seconded by Councillor Egley, on zoning bylaw amendment change to permit it, size of shelter use. Councillor Cloutier, s'il vous plaît.
Merci, Monsieur le Maire. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Read the motion. Whereas the report recommends that a shelter use be permitted on the subject lands to a maximum size of 900 square metres in gross floor area, whereas the proponent has identified that the size of the proposed shelter is 801 square metres in gross floor area, whereas the size of the use is an important consideration when considering land use impacts. Therefore, be resolved and document three details of recommended zoning of a report, 126, be amended by replacing the number 900 with 801, and be it further resolved that there be no further notice pursuant to subsection 3417 of the Planning Act.
To limit, by application in the bylaw, the area that is permitted for shelter beds from 900 square metres to 801 square metres.
Merci, Conseil Cloutier.
Thank you, Councillor Cloutier. And does anybody have any questions or comments?
Carried. Okay. Our next motion is by Conseil Blay, appuyé par-
The next motion is by Councillor Blay, seconded by Councillor Cloutier.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have two, so I'm not sure that they matter.
Yeah, the one that we have in, in order of receiving them is re minor variance.
Perfect. Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor.
And if, could you speak a little closer to the mic? It's very hard to hear you, Councillor. Thank you.
Yes, absolutely. So the, the motion is whereas Section 45 of the Planning Act establishes the jurisdiction of the Committee of Adjustment to authorize minor variances from a bylaw passed under Section 34 or Section 38 of the Act, and whereas such authority is delegated to the Committee of Adjustment by Council of the City of Ottawa through its direction to establish the Committee of Adjustment on September 12, 2001, and whereas there is a desire to have matters relating to any addition or expansion of the proposed shelter use at this location, return to Planning Committee and Council for consideration regardless of whether they are categorized as minor or not. Therefore, be resolved that Planning Committee recommend Council direct staff to initiate a bylaw under Section 45, 103, to establish specific criteria in respect of any proposed expansion or addition relating to the shelter use at 325, 327, 333 Montreal Road and 334 Molforce Street and 273 St. Anne's Avenue, so that any such proposal is to be heard by Planning Committee and Council of the City of Ottawa. Be it further resolved that zoning bylaw amendment adding, in quotes, "shelter" as permitted use to this location, if approved, shall not be enacted until such time as the bylaw reference herein comes into force under Section 45, 104. And be it further resolved that notwithstanding any relucence made by Council in respect to Sections 45, 1.4 and Section 45, 1.3, shall apply to this site-specific amendment being a restriction on the ability to apply for minor variance from provisions of the bylaw in respect of the land, building, or structure before the second anniversary of the day on which the bylaw was amended, should the amendment be approved by Council. And so to sum that up, this is to avoid adding shelter beds without there being proper public consultation, without elected officials being part of that conversation in the future if this proposal does eventually get approved.
Thank you, Councillor. Conseil Fleury, s'il vous plaît.
Monsieur Mayor, j'aimerais savoir- Mr. Mayor, I'd like to get a clarification from our solicitor. Is there anything to add as to the site plan? Would there be an opportunity to withdraw? That is, those authorities that would be delegated to staff? If I understand your question, you'd like to know if you have the right to withdraw the delegation of authority to staff as to the site plan? Does this motion have an impact on my authority as a, as councillor? Non.
Please.
I just want to understand exactly what this is doing. By not enacting it, basically, provides a window where it couldn't happen until certain things happen, correct? Because what I heard last week when I happened to drop by the Committee of Adjustment on another important community issue was that if council wanted that to happen, we should have placed a hold zone on the property, and we hadn't been advised that. So I'm just wondering if this is, if this has the same effect as if we were to place a hold zone on the property?
Mr. Smith's microphone, please.
May I take a first shot at it, Mr. Mayor? First of all, there are two separate issues being dealt with here. There is a motion on the table to put a holding symbol onto the Planning Act, under the zoning approval, which is a separate motion. That is a separate item, which is, gives council to add some, under a limited number of conditions under the Planning Act, you can put conditions-
Can you speak into the mic?
Excuse me. So council can put a holding provision on the zoning to have a limited number of conditions that are in accordance with what the Planning Act allows before development can proceed. And there is a separate motion today that would actually do that, as the effect that Mr., Council applies other motion. This motion triggers another section of the Planning Act, which limits the jurisdiction of the Committee of Adjustment under very specific criteria established by council as it relates to matters. So the city clerk and solicitor or staff could correct me if I've not stated that correctly, but these are two separate provisions of the Act.
Okay. Mr. Mayor, perhaps we could have a, a package of all of the motions that we're going to be entertaining so that we can take a look at them? We appreciate that.
Were they sent, the clerk, were they sent to members of council?
We don't have a copy. I don't have a copy of them here. I just appreciate the package of them.
So it was sent in the procedural memo, but we'll get you a copy.
Thank you.
Does anyone else wish one? Because they're all sent electronically, but if you would like a hard copy, just ask the clerk. Thank you. Councillor Moffett, please.
Thank you. I just had a question related to this, and not necessarily about this specific motion, but about the impact of it on other matters. This motion essentially has the intent of ensuring that any future item related to this property doesn't go to the Committee of Adjustment. What prevents a councillor from coming forward, for instance, on the December 3rd, December 6th Committee of Adjustment, there's 33 items that are going to three different panels? What prevents a councillor in the future from bringing forward similar motions on similar items that are impactful in their ward and declaring them that regardless of minor or major, they come to council?
Mr. Mayor, nothing. However, and I think legal would likely advise, in terms of this motion, if it were brought to the Ontario Municipal Board, would be highly likely that the council would lose.
Is there, is there another way to achieve what this motion says without undermining the responsibilities of the Committee of Adjustment?
Mr. Mayor, the, the motion is crafted under a section that was recently introduced to the Planning Act, which allows council to define additional criteria that the Committee of Adjustment must consider when dealing with an application for a minor variance. That didn't exist previously. It exists today. The motion is being brought forward to extend that ability on a site-specific basis, whereas the intent of the legislation all defer to legal, if any further comments they have. But the way that I understand the legislation is meant to be a city-wide additional criteria that would be defined by council for minor variance applications. Other means that are available and that can be considered, it doesn't prevent an application from being made to the Committee of Adjustment, but when you're dealing with the four-pronged test under the Planning Act, one is the intent and purpose of the zoning bylaw being maintained, the other intent and purpose of the official plan being maintained. If there are provisions introduced that clearly state or speak to the intent of the official plan, in this instance, we do have an official plan amendment to allow a shelter, and if there's a specific intent that's articulated through the official plan, staff could then go to the Committee of Adjustment and take the position that that test is not being met. So there, there are other, are other means. It doesn't prevent the committee from considering the application, but it then requires the committee to have regard to whatever council might have set in place through the official plan, or if an intent is clearly articulated through the zoning bylaw, again, the Committee of Adjustment would have to give consideration to that as to whether or not they feel they have the ability to deal with that type of an application. So this is one technique. There may be other techniques, and legal might have some further comments.
Does, does legal have further comments? And the reason why I ask is because, I mean, could I have every rural severance come to council? Could Councillor Leeper have every infill project in Kitchessifee come to council just by putting forward a motion that says regardless of it being minor, I want it to come to council?
Mr. Mayor, theoretically, that, that could happen. There's, there's very little direction in the new provisions of, of the Planning Act as to whether, whether this type of criteria can be implemented on a site-specific basis or a city-wide basis. There's no direction in the Act. So it's, it's, it, time will tell how the, the Ontario Municipal Board will receive that, but there's certainly nothing that would prevent other councillors from doing something similar in the future at this point.
Thank you.
Councillor Blay, you've already spoken on this item.
Just want to wrap up?
No, there's no wrap-up at council and the committee.
Oh, okay, that's fine.
So a question to the city solicitor, just for clarity's sake, because Councillor Fleury's asked me to make sure that everyone knows the intent of the motion. Could you give us a brief synopsis of what this, the result of this motion would do if it is passed? Or to another solicitor?
Mr. Mayor, the intent was to clarify that in this instance for this site, if there are any additions or changes to the shelter component of the facility, it would not proceed to the Committee of Adjustment and would instead, given this file and the importance of it to the community, go to committee and council to review.
So I would urge members of council to support this. I think it's a bit of a belt and suspenders motion that gives some assurance, and staff do not have a position one way or the other. So on the motion, carried, dissent by Councillor Moffett and Kakish. The next item is a motion by Councillor Blay, appuyé par Conseil Cloutier.
Seconded by Councillor Cloutier.
Environmental design. Staff do not have a position on this. Councillor Blay, the floor is yours, please.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. Whereas the report includes details on page 17 related to the security strategies to be, to be implemented as part of the proposed development, and whereas Section 4.8.8 of the official plan speaks to principles of crime prevention through environmental design, in its review of development applications, therefore be it resolved that council approve a holding provision with two conditions to be included in Document 3, details of the recommended-
Councillor Blay, can you speak into the mic? It's very hard to hear you.
Therefore be it resolved that council approve that a holding provision with two conditions be included in Document 3, details of recommended zoning as follows: that the holding provision not be lifted until site plan control application for the proposal is approved containing, containing conditions related to the implementation of design measures proposed in the report provided by Security Through Safe Design Inc. of May 1, 2017, to the satisfaction of the General Manager of Planning, Infrastructure and Economic Development; and two, that the holding provision not be lifted until such time as the applicant has implemented an ambassador program to the satisfaction of the General Manager of Planning, Infrastructure and Economic Development in consultation with the General Manager of Community and Social Services. Be it further resolved that there be no further notice pursuant to subsection 3417 of the Planning Act. Mr. Mayor, this motion stems from many of the concerns raised during the public consultation, or during the public delegations, excuse me, relating to how the proposed development might have an impact on the neighbourhood and what or what is missing in their current location in the byword market. The applicant has suggested that they would be willing and very interested to put such a program in place, and they think that they can have a program in place in the byword market- market by June of next year, and this would be an outreach program within the community. And I think it will demonstrate to the residents of Vanya that the applicant is willing and interested to do this type of work at their current location and hopefully transfer that good work to their new location should the application be approved.
Okay. Councillor Leeper, please.
Thank you, Chair. This motion speaks to mitigating the anticipated socioeconomic impacts of having a shelter on a traditional main street. Again, I think a number of us are having difficulty reconciling what has been told to us will be ruled out of order versus what won't. On what planning grounds, land use grounds, is putting a hold zone to achieve an ambassador program justifiable under the Planning Act?
Mr. Mayor, this holding zone on this particular program is on George Street, and it is not connected to the application that's before you today.
It's nonetheless, sorry, we're looking at the motion on the ambassador program. Yeah. Section 2. That speaks to mitigating socioeconomic impacts. I'm trying to figure out why an ambassador program has any connection to a planning application.
Mr. Mayor, it does not.
Yeah.
So this is Councillor Blay's motion.
Yep. I think that, sorry, that makes a point about the difficulty of this entire issue. If this is permissible to contemplate, then we have not done nearly enough debating about the larger socioeconomic discussion associated with the larger planning file. Just because it is intellectually incoherent, I cannot support that. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you. Does anyone else wish to speak on Councillor Blay and Cloutier's motion? Or Councillor Egli, I apologize.
So a question for legal. In light of that last exchange with Ms. Sneddon, is this motion out of order?
Mr. Mayor, with regards to the second resolution in the ambassador program, legal has raised concerns, and we spoke about this, I believe, during the Planning Committee. We did talk to the councillor. The ambassador program is not actually part of this application in front of you. It is not in the report. It is not in the documentation. It was raised with certain delegations, and there were several questions and answers raised on that. So it would be with the party's consent that this type of matter would go through. But for specific legal reasons, we think that this Section 2, or Recommendation 2, would certainly be eminently challengeable at the Ontario Municipal Board, and if I'm asked, I will recommend that it be out of order.
So can I just offer a suggestion, Councillor Blay? Would you be willing to remove Section 2 and keep Section 1? I think that would solve the issue that's before us. Is that agreeable?
So, Mr. Mayor, if you want to rule it out of order, that's fine. If the applicant wants to go to the OMB and challenge the fact that they don't want to do an outreach program in the community to solve the problems they propose that they want to propose to solve, then that's fine, too.
Okay, so we'll go back to Councillor Egli. Clarification, Councillor.
So can I suggest this as an alternative? Can we, is it possible to split the vote on the recommendations? We vote on Recommendation 1 and then vote on Recommendation 2?
That's permissible, correct. Councillor Harder, please.
Clarification on this one, if I recall from the conversation that we had, it had a lot to do with the current site and having an ambassador program in place there. And that was promised, I think, for this June, and then see how that works in preparation. And if that's the case, that could be a motion separate by itself, if it speaks to currently and then having the ambassador program verified as good or needed to be changed, et cetera. Perhaps that's the way that Councillor Blay could go. Make it specific to implementation now, monitor for the new place.
Well, I think the, I think Councillor Blay has good intentions on this. I would suggest perhaps that we remove Section 2, to send it to staff as a direction to staff to look into, and we keep it out of the main motion. Is that agreeable, Councillor Blay?
Mr. Mayor, Salvation Army has committed to this program. This was the language that was drafted by legal and planning to achieve the end result. So it's, you know, confusing to me that they now think that it's somehow inappropriate. But if we think that the Salvation Army will actually live up to their word, then take it out. But that wasn't the impression I received from the community delegations at Planning Committee.
Councillor Deans, please.
Suggestion that we leave it as is, and you just separate number one from number two, and we vote on them.
So Councillor Egli has asked as well for that. So we will move the entire motion and vote first on item number one? Well, the separation is just the vote is being separated. We're going to go yays and nays on one and then on two? No. Okay, so on item one, carried. Agreed. Item two, yays and nays, please. Carried. Okay, carried. Dissent by Councillor Egli. Is that it? And Chair Nishen. Yep. The next motion is by Councillor Flurry, seconded by Councillor Leeper, with respect of removal of shelter as a permitted use at 171 George Street.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So what you have in front of you, and we're asking to remove the authorization to have a shelter at 171 George Street, once the Salvation Army has left. Of course, we would like them to go elsewhere than on Montreal Road, but in this case, it's to comply with the obligations of the 2008 report.
Remove permitted use of shelter at 171 George, which is the current Salvation Army site, moved by Councillor Flurry, signed by Councillor Leeper. Additional comments? Carried. The next motion is the limiting amendment to life of Salvation Army operations. Councillor Flurry, seconded by Councillor Neusbaum. Councillor Flurry, please.
So, Mr. Mayor, this is exactly the same motion as the previous one, but for the new location. As we have the 2008 report in front of us, I believe it's important that if the applicant was to be granted the use on Montreal Road, but never pursue it, that anyone else couldn't just come in and use that zone, use that use as permitted on the site. So I think that it, I know I've seen legal's interpretation of it. I believe that in this case, the only one that could appeal the decision would be the applicant, and I don't see why the applicant would not favor this motion. In my mind, the applicant would be, if council so wishes, as that would gain that permission of use at Montreal Road. But if that's never exercised, it should never be granted to respect the intents of the separation distances and the shelter cap. And that speaks to the report and the analysis from staff on the relocation, and not the increase of numbers.
Do you want to ask that question?
Well, I got a...
Mr. O'Connor. My understanding is that staff do not support this motion.
That's correct, Mr. Mayor, and I'll turn it over to lawyers. I agree with the councillor that it would be the Salvation Army who would likely be the most obvious one to appeal this to the Ontario Municipal Board, and if they didn't do so, I agree with the, I agree with the word, councillor.
Okay, does anyone else wish to speak on this?
Just on, I wasn't done, Mr. Mayor.
Go ahead.
So I think that's pretty straightforward, everyone. Like, if we're granting a use on Montreal Road for that use, we expect the Salvation Army to use it. If they don't use it, don't allow for that use to hold at that site. The only person that can appeal us to that is the Salvation Army. So please be coherent, and if you're supportive of the SAF report, it's a relocation, then you can't vote this down. It counters the objectives of what your arguments are.
Anyone else wish to talk or question this particular motion by Councillor Flurry? On the motion, carried. The next motion is term of council priorities section of the report. Councillor Flurry, seconded by Councillor Brockington. Staff have no position on this particular item. Councillor Flurry, s'il vous plaît.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Point of principle to me, we have a report card called the Term of Council Priorities. We have amazing staff at the city that keep track of what we accomplish. The ones that were raised for this report are the following: advance equity and inclusion for the city's diverse population; two, create new affordable housing options; and three, support growth from the local economy. I'll speak briefly to the three matters. So for the first one, advancing equity and inclusion, diverse population, I think we have to be careful. In Ward 12, we have the Ottawa Neighborhood Study, which has identified my area as the lowest income per capita in the city. That does not advance any items of that matter. In terms of creating affordable units, you're all in agreeance that shelter, although they're temporary, they're not affordable units. So let's be clear on not meeting those, that goal. And then, three, in terms of supporting the growth in the economy, I also want to be careful, let's identify real growth. This year is a relocation, although there might be more employees, the employees would be in, would be in our city anywhere, no matter where the programs would go. So it's not additional intent, it's not something that's very controversial. It just sends a message that we do have a report card, and we're not just checking boxes, that what we bring forward as term of council priority is actually very, something that we care about. So I would appreciate your support as well on this. Thank you.
Councillor, if you could just read the motion.
Oh, sorry, sorry. It's basically this, to therefore be resolved that term of council priorities section of the report be revised to remove the identified terms of priorities in this report.
On the motion, carried. The next motion is moved by Councillor Egli, seconded by Councillor Cloutier, with respect to official plan amendment and zoning bylaw amendment. Councillor Egli, please.
It's quite long, but I think it's important to read it out. So whereas over the course of the three-day Planning Committee meeting to consider the zoning and official plan amendments for the relocation of Salvation Army Shelter, members of council heard from an active and engaged community that wants to be able to provide input into how this development proceeds. And whereas the Salvation Army has indicated that understands needs to be proactive, need to be proactive, rather, in engaging local residents, community stakeholders, as it develops the site plan in order to contribute to being a positive impact in the neighborhood. And whereas although council consideration the zoning official plan application must be based on land use planning principles, council recognizes the importance of examining the services that we provide at the facility and the context of the neighborhood and the city's own housing first strategy. And whereas the federal and provincial governments are making significant and targeted investments in housing and homelessness that may have an impact on the program for this facility in the future, and whereas the next phase of development approvals for the facility is expected to begin in the new year and take place over the next several years, and there is time for productive and meaningful dialogue to take place to help shape the site plan review, drafting conditions, programming the facility to help but promote the city's housing and homeless goals unless in any community impact, therefore be it resolved that council direct staff to work with the Ward Councillor, the Chair of the Planning Committee, the Chair of Community Protective Services Committee, the Mayor and the Salvation Army to establish the site plan review and programming advisory committee consisting of the above-named members of council, relevant city staff and community stakeholders, to provide input into the next phase of the Salvation Army relocation development. Be it further resolved that where deemed appropriate by General Manager of Planning, Infrastructure and Economic Development in consultation with legal services, specific recommendations from the site plan review and programming advisory committee be incorporated into the conditions of the site plan. So, in short, this motion came as a result, though I don't sit on planning, I was at the majority of the planning meetings, I heard the delegations on both sides, and what really struck me was that the Salvation Army delegations and staff and consultants were sitting five feet away from the Vanya consultants and consultants, and nobody was talking to each other. And I don't say that in a judgmental way, both sides were not talking to each other. They were talking at each other through the Chair and through delegations. But all the people were in the room that could have had a productive conversation, and neither side was having it. They were, it was a very triangular type of thing. They would speak to the Chair, and the Chair would speak to, and would just go that way. And they weren't actually speaking to each other. So that really struck me. And as a result, I reached out, had an initial chat with the Salvation Army, and said, I think there's an opportunity here, and I know everybody is pretty well entrenched, but somebody has to make the first move to indicate that there is a willingness to discuss, there's a willingness to collaborate. And they went off and thought about it. We had further discussions over the next number of days. I had discussions with some of my council colleagues, including obviously Councillor Cloutier. And I also had a discussion very recently with the Ward Councillor, Councillor Flurry, about this very motion. And while I respect Councillor Flurry's position that he cannot support the proposal overall, and we had a good discussion about that, he did indicate that should this carry, and should it be upheld by the OMB down the road, because it's going to end up there at some point, in all likelihood, regardless of how we vote today, that he thinks this is a good plan, a good path forward. And he is supportive of having the discussion around both site plan and also around program delivery. I also understand that this is not something that we can impose on the Salvation Army. It has to be something that they agree with, and I understand we also have their consent to enter into this process. Now, it will be put on hold, unfortunately, if either side goes to the OMB. But I believe that it solidifies a role for the community that we heard from, that we're very impassioned, very engaged. It solidifies a role that if this is upheld by the OMB, whatever the decision is, if it is to go forward, then you have a role here, you have a role to play, and we're not going to let the Salvation Army back out of acknowledging that role, and I don't think that they would. But this motion solidifies your input, solidifies your engagement in a very meaningful way. And as I say, I had a very good discussion with your Ward Councillor this morning about this very issue. So I would urge everybody to seize this opportunity. You may not get the result you want at the end of the day, but this will allow some bridge building, this will allow some discussion going forward in a collaborative way to see how this can work in the best way possible for all parties. So again, I would urge all my council members to follow the lead suggested by the Ward Councillor and by Councillor Cloutier, and move forward with this motion. Thank you.
Thank you, Councillor Egli. Councillor Neusbaum, please.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just some questions to the mover, because I'm confused by the motion. One of the clauses says, whereas the next phase of the development and approvals for this facility is expected to begin in the next year. Have I, we haven't voted on this application yet, so I'm just unclear what we're voting on now without having voted on the application.
We can have Councillor Egli's mic on, please.
That's fair comment, Councillor, and I was working with staff on a very short timeline to get this done. Staffs in the room, if there's a way to amend it to reflect that very valid concern that's been raised by Councillor Neusbaum, I'm happy to have a friendly amendment to the motion in that regard, so.
Okay. My next question is whether the mover would see it as a friendly amendment if we amended this motion to defer the application, create the type of committee that's being envisioned here. We can call it the Programming Advisory Committee, we could call it the 100-Day Task Force, we could call it whatever we wanted, and do that work before council votes on the application, given that clearly there will be a greater incentive on the part of all parties to come to an agreement before a council vote as opposed to after. So would that be considered a friendly amendment?
Unfortunately not. My understanding is, and legal can weigh in on this or planning, but my understanding is that if we don't make a decision at this point on the proposal as it lays in front of us, we run out of time, I think, on December 13th and 14th, and the matter will automatically go to the OMB. So we don't have 100 days to play with in these circumstances. So just practically, I don't see how that can work. But again, I think by... But again, I think by embedding this, the concerns and the intent in the motion, to your point about having a meaningful discussion, the parties will have to have a meaningful discussion, they will have to be at the table, and I see Mr. O'Connor's raising his hand, so.
I think if I could just offer two comments, councillor Newsbaum, as you know, we just defeated deferral, so that's not, we can't bring that back at the same meeting, deferral was defeated. And the second point was, the OMB process kicks in, I believe, December 13th or 14th, this is well beyond the 100 days, and Mr. O'Connor, working with Leslie Donnelly, I believe, have come up with a suggestion to help deal with the issue that councillor Newsbaum just brought up. So, Mr. O'Connor, please.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, we would suggest that at the end of the first resolution, you add the words "if approved", which would then, I think, get you to where you want to go. And the only other comment I would make, Mr. Mayor, is that the 180 days lapses, the councillor's absolutely correct, on December 13th, and that would trigger the ability of the applicant to go to the municipal board. It's not automatic, but it would most likely be.
Okay, so is it a friendly amendment?
First question councillor Newsbaum, so I have absolutely no problem with that amendment.
Okay, and my last question to councillor Egli is just with regard to the mandate and scope, there's specific reference to site plan review. I'm wondering whether or not the mandate of this group would include looking at options which may change the configuration, create, for instance, a second site that could help split some of the services if that was what is desired. Is this, is the idea here to look only at site plan and programming on that location, or would there be a mandate to look at options, creative options beyond the specific site in question?
It's site plan, so I think it, again, I look to staff, but I think it has to deal with the particular site in question. That doesn't allow it to look at a site in Canat or a Carp or wherever. So I think just practically, all it can do is look at this proposal and the four corners of this proposal and this particular site. At the same time, I don't think anybody stopped if somebody has a really creative idea at the table and puts it there that people can't discuss it, but in terms of the practicality of this motion, I think they can only deal with the application in front of them and the piece of land in front of them.
And presumably, if councillor Fleury lifts delegated authority for site plan, then any work that is done by such a committee would return to council, obviously, for full approval. Correct? Mr. Mayor, that is correct. Thank you.
Thank you councillor, conseil Fleury, s'il vous plaît.
Monsieur le maire. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I know that we have had an answer.
Through this motion to lift delegated authority on this application for site plan.
That's correct.
Thank you.
Councillor Taylor, please.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chair, and thank you to councillor Egli, councillor Cloutier for moving this motion. I think it very well articulates the fact that if approved, this is not the end of the discussion, and I spoke a little bit about this at the planning committee. This actually signals that the discussion is very much alive and is growing. So to councillor Egli's point, you know, while the motion puts strict parameters around kind of the creation of this, of this group, and the Salvation Army has signaled with a public release, or at least they released to councillors a memo saying that they were open to engaging in this process, that, you know, we wind up with a scenario where we have both, both groups that clearly articulated their concerns, the Salvation Army and its proponents, and the community and its proponents, whom we heard from very, very clearly and very diligently over three days. It brings them into a space together where, you know, good things can start to emerge. And notwithstanding the fact that they'll probably start the discussion around the very strict confines of this and the site plan, to councillor Newsbaum's point and concern, I take councillor Egli's tact that once all the parties are in a room and they start working together, I believe that this could lead to a lot of positive work in the community and a lot of positive work with respect to this proposal. So I appreciate the movers for moving it, and I'll be happy to support it.
Thank you very much councillor Taylor. Councillor Wilkinson, please.
Thank you, madam, Mr. Mayor. This is a very good process, and I think the community would have liked this to start a while back. But the point of it is that even if it's late, it's better to have it than not have it at all. Like, we did this a bit with Lansdowne Park, we had a lot of controversy at the beginning. We set up some committee meetings, I was involved with the transportation one that worked for a long time, was this being implemented, to ensure that the end result would not cause difficulties for the community. And the changes that were made at that time during the whole process before it actually got fully implemented, made a huge difference to the community. I think this is an opportunity, you're all, the community is all very involved right now, and rather than losing that involvement, the site plan is frankly the most important thing in my mind, that is most and more important than the zoning, because it shows what it's going to look like, how it's going to go. And they do change as you go ahead. I've had a lot of controversial site plans, I'm dealing with another one right now that is causing some problems in the community. What you have to do is continue to have dialogue, and I do a lot of dialogue in my community, and I think your community is doing that right now. And though I think this is something that you should as a community endorse doing, you may not be happy with the way the final decision on the zoning goes today, but that's not the end of the story. This proposal actually puts the city into a position where they are going to be working with the Salvation Army and with the community, and the Salvation Army has to take part in this, because it would make a difference in getting their site plan approval. And that means that you'll actually get some of the dialogue that you wished you'd had a bit earlier. So, and I think it's something that we'd like to see encouraged even more so, you've got a number of other studies going on in Vanyer right now. I know it's some things that are really important for your community, because you're changing a lot. We've seen a lot of changes already happen in Westborough and places like that, and this is starting to happen in Vanyer. And some of them are good, and some of them are not so good, and some cause problems, and some are easier dealt with, and some are really tough to deal with, and this is one of the tough ones. So I say this is a motion that is actually going to help you along the way, it's going to help the city to make better decisions on the final outcome of the site plan. And from that, I think it will help you in other sites that might come forward for developing Vanyer, because you're going to have a lot of that happening, because you're so, you're so close to the downtown that you're becoming an attractive area for things to happen. And, and things happening have impacts. They have big impacts. So having this process in place will help you to deal with, not just the impact, which is one, but future impacts as well. So I'm going to support this motion, I think it's very important under the process that we're having right now. The zoning is very hard for us to deal with, it's a hard factual kind of thing, it gives us a lot of trouble, because the issues are not zoning issues, they're emotional issues, they're impact and community issues, and that's what this motion is addressing. So I very much strongly support it, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you councillor. Councillor Leaper, please.
Thank you very much, Chair. I again am struggling with the coherency and logic of this discussion. In several places in this motion, we talk about programming in the facility, in the whereas, as we talk about investments in housing and homelessness that may have an impact on programming for this facility. Site plan review and programming advisory committee help shape the site plan review, drafting conditions and programming of the facility. We are, at least in theory, not concerned in this discussion today about the programming in this facility, we are making a zoning discussion. Why is this motion coming forward when we are not talking about programming? We're not talking about who this shelter will serve, we're not talking about how it will serve them. What is the necessity of this motion to deal with programming? Is there a concern that we think we're going to need to deal with? I guess I would ask maybe the councillor Egli to respond and ask staff and legal whether in debating this motion, if it passes, is the OMB then going to take a look and determine that in fact council is making a decision on the basis of programming?
So what I would respond to that, councillor Leaper, and I appreciate your concern, what I would respond to that is, this motion doesn't go to the approval of this proposal one way or another. What it does is, it kicks in after an approval, and councillor Newsbaum pointed out, and we've made that amendment. So this isn't part of our decision-making in terms of whether we approve or we don't approve this particular proposal. What it says is, if approved and upheld by the OMB, for whatever reasons the OMB upholds it, then these steps will come forward and these things will happen. But it's not, it's not about the approval, it's about what happens if and when it does get approved. So to me, that's the distinction, and I think it's an important distinction.
It is, it is an important distinction. This is not part of the bylaw that we're going to be crafting, but it's come up for a reason. And I'm just wondering if you could help me understand why we're talking about programming in the larger context of this debate that we're having today over whether or not to approve the bylaw amendments?
Again, I foresee a situation down the road when this may, and I say may, may get upheld by the OMB. If it does, this community and the Salvation Army have a whole lot of talking to do, they have a whole lot of communication and healing to do. And I think that this is a way in which that can be facilitated. And you're quite right, our decision-making process is about planning considerations, and that's what we're focused on today, and that's what the OMB will focus on as well, I hope, when they consider whatever, however we vote today. But at the end of the day, yes, there is going to be a new resident, if you will, in the community, and this is about having that resident fit in, as I said early, as best as they possibly can. And I think that the community was very clear during the three days that they want to be, have discussion, they want to have consultation about this new member of their community, and this allows, and as I said, entrenches and solidifies the ability for them to do that. But again, it does not form part of the rationale for whether we accept or we don't accept the planning proposal in front of us.
Councillor Leaper, anything else?
No, I'll leave it there, Chair.
Thank you. Councillor Deans, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Well, I actually think this is an important motion, and I like this motion. And the reason I like this motion is probably the same reason councillor Leaper kind of doesn't, because it talks about programming. And the frustration, one of the frustrations that I've had through this whole process is we have not been able to talk about programming, and that's a really important part of all of this. And so I think that's where some of the frustration has stemmed from. And so I, you know, I can see the handwriting on the wall, I think we can all see the handwriting on the wall, that this will be approved today, it'll go to the OMB, we don't know what they will do, but the day may well come that we're going to the next phase of this. And in that phase, we do need to talk about programming. The federal government and the provincial government are laying out strategies that may well change the direction that we go into the future. And so I do think that it's very important that there be programming considerations as this thing moves forward, and I think this is going to take quite a long time, but I think that the community needs to be there, I'd like to be there as the chair of the Community and Protective Services Committee, to give some guidance on where I think maybe it would be best to go. I don't think, regardless of the decision that's made today, this is over. I think that's a process, it's a journey, and I think the community needs to be part of that, and so do the chairs of the committees and the councillors and the, everyone needs to be part of making this thing work. We can't leave any community behind. And so to the extent that the spirit of this motion is to try and help going forward and build some of the bridges and some of the divide that's happened through this initial phase of the process, I think this is an important motion, and I would suggest to all of my colleagues that they support it.
Thank you councillor. Conseil Fleury, s'il vous plaît.
Monsieur le maire. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I would have liked for both committees to be joined to discuss social consequences, the whole breadth of what is proposed.
What the mover of the motion brought forward, which is saying that, you know, there needs to be a discussion. I want to be clear, and it's important to be said, that my community since day one and right up to now and continues to be always ready to meet, it's the applicant that has not want to, that hasn't wanted to amend any of their submission.
Does anyone else wish to speak to the Egli-Cloutier motion? I'm sorry, councillor Harder?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yeah, I want to echo what councillor Deans was saying. This is, I think, extremely important, and we are not talking about tomorrow, we're not talking about next week, we're talking about once the very likely appeal is dealt with at the Ontario Municipal Board. What this does is quite unique. When a site plan is before the application comes into staff, they are not engaged with working with programming. So through the, through the days of the meeting, several times I referred to councillor Deans, Chair Deans, who is sitting where she is now, and I said, in February, Chair Deans is going to have this in a very holistic fashion before her committee, and out of that is going to come the council terms of priorities for the next term of council, which then takes us another four years, and what we do then. As she said, there are likely going to be many changes that are going to come at play, hopefully positive ones, with regard to homeless and homelessness and housing, et cetera. We don't know what they look like now, but this will be the first time that a motion has been put forward that includes with the site plan consideration the community, the applicant, the local councillor, the chair of Community and Protective Services, et cetera, working on programming for a specific site. And it's unique, and it's special, and it's for this particular location, so I really encourage everyone to please support it.
Okay, does anyone else wish to speak to the matter? So on the motion is presented. Carried. The next motion is moved by councillor Deans, seconded by councillor Fleury with regards to Building Better Revitalized Neighborhoods. Councillor Deans, please.
Thanks, Mr. Mayor, I'm going to read the motion even though it is a little lengthy. Whereas during the planning committee meeting, many residents of Vanyer expressed concern that their community will see the positive growth that has begun in the neighborhoods and along Montreal Road stalled or reversed with the construction of the Salvation Army hub. And whereas the city is continuing to invest in initiatives and infrastructure to improve life for Vanyer residents and businesses, including the redevelopment of Montreal Road and the establishment of a community improvement program for Montreal Road to encourage economic development. And whereas the Building Better Revitalized Neighborhoods initiative is a term of council strategic priority that uses an innovative, collaborative and community-defined approach to the delivery of new and existing programs and infrastructure to improve the health, vibrancy and livability of priority neighborhoods in Ottawa. And whereas the BBRN has successfully worked in two neighborhoods, Heatherington and Vanyer South. And whereas the BBRN initiative is overseen by councillor's sponsor group made up of the chair and vice-chair planning committee, the chair of Community and Protective Services Committee, the chair of the Ottawa Community Housing Corporation, the chair of the Board of Health and deputy mayor Taylor. And whereas the BBRN sponsors group has developed an expertise in developing collaborative stakeholder engagement processes for targeted neighborhoods, including grassroots, resident-driven collaboration, and this expertise can provide value to the Montreal Road projects outside of the outcome of this planning application. Therefore, be it resolved that council direct staff working on program and infrastructure programs, projects, including the upcoming Montreal Road redevelopment project and the upcoming community improvement plan, to work with the Building Better Revitalized Neighborhoods Initiative sponsors group on how to incorporate BBRN community collaboration tools for those projects, and be it further resolved that the Building Better Revitalized Neighborhoods Initiative sponsors group identify the 2018 neighborhood and the BBRN initiative to be Vanyer North. And, well, let me just say that I promoted a revitalization strategic priority for this term of council at this council table. We started a couple of years ago, actually at the planning committee. Next week, we will bring the reports from Vanyer South and Heatherington, the initial reports to that planning committee. And having participated closely in the BBRN initiative, I think that it has been a success, and it has broken down a lot of silos at this city, and there's a lot of positive outcomes. And I think the staff have really developed cross-departmentally a lot of expertise in this field, and I think this expertise could be very valuable in Vanyer North. And we do have some funds left in the BBRN initiative that I think we could well spend in Vanyer North to assist through all of this process. So with that in mind, I'm just asking my colleagues to support that Vanyer North be identified for BBRN in 2018. And this is not in any way, councillor Fleury is the second on this motion, this is in no way to take away from the CIP process, it's really to be a sister component to it. Thank you.
Thank you councillor, it's a good motion. It's a good motion. Counselor Brockington, please.
Thank you, Your Worship. Just a question to staff. When Counselor Deans first came to council, she wanted us to focus exclusively on Albion, Heatherington. We asked staff to go back and look at the entire city. You identified 20 neighborhoods, you ranked them, you gave us your top three, which were Albion, Heatherington, Vannier, and Carlington. I certainly am supportive of the motion before us, but I just want to understand, if we're going to prioritize Vannier as the next community, what happens to Carlington? Do they get completely left out, or are they going to be next in queue for the next year?
Right of order by Counselor Harder.
Carlington's already been completed, as the Counselor should know, through the community design plan. That was the tactic we took. It was one of the three. The community design plan was ongoing for Carlington, and Counselor Brockington approved doing Carlington in that process. Carlington's no longer on the list.
Okay, Counselor Brockington, the floor is yours.
No, I'm well aware of the CDB plan, which is still ongoing, heavily involved with, but I just wanted to make sure that the, once Vannier's selected, Carlington is not part of the BBRN, and it will go on to other communities, is that still the plan? But I'm certainly interested in Carlington, but we identify Vannier South, then we'll relook at the list after that.
Counselor Harder, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just for clarification for everyone, at this point, the Heatherington and Carlington and Vannier, which actually Counselor Newsbaum will tell you morphed into Overbrook through that process, was a pilot project. That's coming forward to Planning Committee on Tuesday. But as Chair Deans said, the work that was done was exceptional, and the way that it captured the heart and soul of the communities involved was very, very important. We don't have a community on the list, there is no community on the list. Was Vannier itself part of the original list? I think Counselor, the other sponsors on the group, absolutely it was, but we carved off the Vannier South piece. So this is a fit, it's not bumping anything because there's nothing on the list, but because there is money that is going to be spent on the CIP for Montreal Road in 2018 under the leadership of Mr. Smith's shop, and I absolutely have spoken to him about this, and understanding through General Manager Janice Burrell and Dan Chegne, the General Manager, and all of the departments, the library, public library that worked on this, it truly was a very good, all-city work that was accomplished by our own staff. We found we didn't need the consultant that we thought that we'd have to spend money on, and we all benefited from it, mostly, for sure, the people in Heatherington and in Vannier South. And I think that all the council sponsors would be able to say that without a fact. So this is not about bumping anything, this is about taking the passion of this community that we listened to, sir, for three days, and rather than waiting for an OMB appeal, and rather than bumping it out for two years, this is something that is, we were able to do next year with, under the leadership of this sponsors group.
Okay, so back to Counselor Brockington, please.
Good.
You're satisfied?
Yep, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Counselor Fleury, s'il vous plaît.
So, Mr. Willis, we've received a request from the BIA well prior to this application from the Salvation Army to consider Montreal Road as a CIP. We did hear it in the Mayor's budget presentation. I want to hear from you on how this motion plays in, and if it at all hinders some of those efforts.
Mr. Mayor, I don't think this hinders in the least. As a matter of fact, I consider it a dovetailing another methodology for approaching the community-level planning and the community improvement planning and bringing them together. I actually think it's beneficial to advance them both at the same time, and I think that will be of benefit, both in terms of the consultation and the type of input we get, and in terms of identifying strategic measures. So we support the approach.
Thank you.
Okay, Counselor Taylor, please, on the motion.
Thanks very much, Mr. Mayor, and I'm pleased to support this motion. And I think one of the things, although I don't sit on Planning Committee, I had the opportunity to sit for the three days, for the vast majority of the three days, and listen to the delegations who came out, many of whom came as residents from Vannier or business owners from Vannier. And one of the things that struck me was that a lot of what we heard from residents was their concerns about conditions today. And, you know, they articulated that very ably into, you know, some fears and concerns about what does this mean for the future. But the conditions today weren't lost, I don't think, on people around this table. And so, you know, with the upcoming reconstruction of Montreal Road, we believe that, or at least I believe, that we'll be able to start addressing some of the visual and physical concerns that people raised. The CIP, which is a wonderful tool, will help lift up businesses in those communities, or businesses along Montreal Road, which will help have spin-off effects for the community around there. But the BBRN, it was a process, and credit to Counselor Deans for being the real originator of the BBRN process, and Counselor Harder for leading it. This is about the people. And the BBRN, I think, positions the community really well and brings the stakeholders together to have that discussion, dialogue, engagement about lifting up the area from a people perspective. So we did hear statistics about how there are challenges in Vannier with, you know, things that are supposed to be up or down, things that are supposed to be down or up. The BBRN, I think, takes the people approach of tackling some of those challenges, the same way the CIP will take the business approach, and the redevelopment of Montreal Road will take the physical approach. So I think one of the messages that we send by approving this today is that we heard the residents who came out and said, "We have a problem today, and we need your help today." So I think this really articulates that we heard that concern, and I would encourage folks to support it. Thank you.
Great, thank you, Counselor Taylor. Es qu'est des autres commentaires ou questions?
Any other comments or questions?
On the motion. Moved by Counselor Deans, seconded by Counselor Fleury. Carried. I have no other motions before. Does anyone else wish to move a motion before we go to questions and comments? Let's get it. Counselor Fleury, did you have another motion?
Just for questions.
Anyone else? Counselor Fleury, questions, please?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. So my first question is to Janice Burrell. So, Janice, I want you to clarify, did we, prior to the submission of the Salvation Army, ask our real estate staff to provide the sites that are vacant or available at the City of Ottawa?
We did not ask for our real estate to look at other sites.
Thank you. Can you confirm that we have an agreement for shelter services at the Ottawa Inn and the Concord Hotel?
Mr. Mayor, we do have agreements with those two motels for rooms for short-term rental accommodations for overflow for family shelters.
Are you aware of the shelters that would fit under the Violence Against Women across the city?
Mr. Mayor, I'm not aware of the locations of the VAW shelters across the city, or addresses.
Have we ever asked, we've never asked the province for that list, just for our knowledge?
Personally, I have not. They're not for public information. Their sites are confidential.
But presumably, they would be zoned appropriately, so perhaps it'd be a direction to staff that we do inquire with our provincial and federal partners on any corrections or any shelters that they would fund, so that we have a record of them.
Mr. Mayor, I guess I would look to my colleagues in planning in terms of the definitions.
Well, I think on those items, they're kept confidential, obviously, for safety reasons, so I don't believe it would be appropriate that we obtain that list. I think it has to remain confidential for the safety of the women, is my understanding. Mr. O'Connell, could you offer a comment?
That would be my understanding as well, Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Mayor, I did keep the list confidential, as you know, as part of the deliberations and discussion. I've not released any of those addresses, and I do believe that because of the shelter cap and separation distances that were approved as part of the 2008 report, that we need to have an open eye into that matter. It doesn't change their great work and efforts, but I do think that it would be appropriate for Mr. Willis and his team to have access to that list, not for public use, obviously to protect the women in this case.
I guess, I'm just not clear, getting the addresses, what would be the purpose of having the addresses?
Because then we would have a better, clearer, more open discussion on, staff are saying they respect the shelter cap, they believe that it's a relocation, but my understanding is that there are 12 shelters if we look at those descriptions. So to close that portion of the unclosed debate, I think it is important for planning staff to have that information.
Mr. Mayor, we have reviewed the 12 locations that Counselor Fleury is referring to, and those locations, according to the definition in the bylaw, are either community resource centers, group homes, health and resource centers, residential care facilities, they are not shelters. We have four shelters in Ward 12.
So, Mr. Mayor, obviously, I don't agree with staff on that matter, but that will be the courts to decide, but I just want to make sure from now on, on any other application, we do have restrictions as part of the 2008 report that were approved. Can the Planning Department get access to that list for future planning decision matters only?
Again, I think we've been given a legal opinion and a planning answer from Ms. Sneddon, so that's the answer.
Okay, well, can we not get that list even if they are group homes? Like, that's what I don't understand. I understand I disagree with staff for the designation of those spaces, but it's still an important list for planning.
Well, again, for community safety reasons, for the protection of these women who are escaping violence, I do not believe that that is appropriate, and I'm ruling it out of order. So, next question, please.
So, Mr. Willis, can you remind council where shelters are currently permitted, in which zones they're permitted in the city?
Mr. Mayor, we have identified through the staff report, and I'm going to let Ms. O'Connell add to this, is that within the official plan, we do not prohibit shelters on traditional main streets and within the zoning bylaws.
Mr. Mayor, with all due respect, I'm asking a question to Mr. Willis, him and I have had this conversation before, I'm just asking, for public record, remind council where shelters are currently permitted. I'm not asking it at the debate on prohibition or permission.
I realize that, but Mr. Willis is entitled to refer to a member of staff if he chooses.
And Mr. Mayor, Ms. O'Connell will provide you all the locations where, in the official plan, we currently state is permitted, but I just wanted to make members of council aware that although it may not be identified in the official plan specifically, that does not mean that we would not permit it.
Mr. Counselor Fleury?
I think she's asked.
Mr. Mayor, in the official plan, shelters are included under the generally permitted uses section that states where the zoning bylaw permits dwelling in areas designated general urban area, developing community, central area, mixed-use center, and village, the bylaw will also permit shelter accommodation.
My last question is, so on average, at the current location on George Street, we have three calls per year per client. I did the math from last time. With the increase, if we were to use the same ratios in the new facility, there'd be an increase in calls of over 1,000 per year to the new location. I'd love to hear from planning on, did we work with Ottawa Police Service to have an understanding of the land use impact at 179 George? Were we aware of these statistics? And how did that play into the comment on page 17, which states that the existing, that this proposal would cause no undue adverse impacts?
Mr. Mayor, the answer has a few different parts to it, I believe. The application before us is a site-specific application. Calls related to Ottawa Police as a result of criminal behavior are not part of what we review through the subject application. That being said, through the circulation process, Ottawa Police are circulated as part of the application process. They did not comment back with any concerns related to the subject site location before us. And I would also advise councillors and committee that one of the permitted use on this subject site is also an emergency service location, so there is a possibility for even such a use as in a paramedic station or a fire ambulance station on this subject site without any zoning amendments.
Questions and comments? Counselor Kakis, so you have, it's the five-minute rule on questions and comments, I gave more leeway to Counselor Fleury, who will come back and do wrap-up comments. Counselor Kakis, questions, comments, please?
Thank you, Mayor. It's a question to staff. With regards to the official plan currently, we see that the shelter use is not permitted on the main street, and so that's why the application here is before us. But it is in general urban, so it would be, for example, behind in the streets, behind in the middle of a residential neighborhood, is that correct, in the current OP?
In the official plan, yes, that's correct.
Okay, and so I think Counselor Newsbaum made this point about, you know, us having the OP wrong, and when we do review the OP, it makes sense to me that we would have it on a main street rather than in the middle of the residential community as is in the OP right now. So is that something we would be looking to change in the next official plan?
Mr. Mayor, we'll be starting the process for the official plan review in 2019, and there's a number of things that we will be looking at, and it ranges from soup to nuts. I mean, we're crossing the whole gambit, so it's something that I think we can definitely take a look at in terms of how specific we get in terms of policy direction, whether we're focused on more high level, whether we continue the same approach that we have today in terms of broad land use designations and associated policies, or whether we take a different tact. But I think this item has clearly identified that there's a need to introduce policies that speak to issues around policies related to sort of the sector of the accommodation, affordable housing, so those things will definitely be addressed.
Okay, and so what was the logic or the rationale at the time of not permitting it on a traditional but being okay in the middle of a residential community in a general urban designation?
Mr. Mayor, so when OPA 97, which was the previous comprehensive official plan before OPA 150, was brought forward, it actually included main streets as an area where shelters could be considered appropriate through the process of the 2008 study that Counselor Fleury has referred to, and then also subsequent direction at that time, there was a further review in terms of whether or not shelters should be allowed as a right on traditional main streets. The decision was taken not to carry that forward, and in part, it really reflects the fact that traditional main streets vary quite significantly, or main streets generally vary quite significantly across the city. In this particular instance, we have a situation where on a site-specific basis, it works, it can be integrated into the fabric of the main street without compromising the objectives for main streets. In other situations, you might not be able to achieve that same condition as we're able to achieve on this site. And I think even the discussion that we heard at Planning Committee with the situation on the George Street location, where the shelter is right on the sidewalk and the common area for the shelter is within the public realm. Traditional main streets, for the most part, are generally shallow in terms of their lot depth and might not be able to support some of the other support functions and needs to ensure appropriate functioning of that operation. So I think the right answer was taken at that time. Shelters generally are recognized as being appropriate in higher-intensity mixed-use areas. Main streets are a mixed-use area, are the downtown locations, R5 zones in the residential areas, and other areas where they're permitted as a right. It's generally the higher-intensity, higher-order zones where there's a variety of services that support sort of the needs of the people that are using the facilities.
But then how would we justify putting this in a general urban zone, though, in the middle of a residential community with the current OP?
Mr. Mayor, the general urban area covers a broad swath of the city, and it includes areas that have various zones attached to them, including higher-density residential zones. So in terms of, you have to look at the official plan, but then you also look at the implementing zoning. The official plan does speak to further limitations being established through the zoning. In the case of our zoning bylaw, shelters are not permitted as a right in the lower-density residential zones. You would have to go through a zoning bylaw amendment. They are permitted as a right in the higher-density residential zones.
Okay, so if you look at the neighborhood behind Mount Four and those streets behind where the current site is... where the current site is, that's general urban, it would be permitted there now, correct? That's what I was advised by the-
It's not permitted by the zoning, you still have to go through a rezoning, you just don't need an official plan amendment. In this instance, we dealt with an official plan amendment because it's not specifically identified as a designation under the generally permitted uses in the OP in terms of where shelters should be allowed, as it is in general urban, but you would still need a rezoning.
Okay, so, just to go back to my first question, in the future, you would be looking to change this, and the staff recommendation or position would be looking to change the designations for traditional main streets when it comes to shelters?
We'd be looking at a whole bunch of things as part of the new official plan, and that would be definitely within the suite of things to be looked at, yes.
But staff didn't recommend that in the last official plan recommendations?
In the last official plan, it was originally identified as a permitted use for traditional main streets, was taken out after there was a direction from Council to take a look at the prohibition of shelters on traditional main streets.
Okay, and that was in, what year was that?
Mr. Mayor, that would have occurred in 2010, I believe.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Questions and comments, Counsel Chernyschenko, please.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. I believe the comments I'm going to make will probably be reflective of what most, if not all of us, have been going through for the last number of weeks, even if in the end, we don't all choose to vote in the same way. I've held off until today making a final decision on how I'm going to vote, but I've indicated for quite a number of weeks that I'm leaning against this project, leaning towards voting no, and not just because I want to sit on the fence and see which way the wind is blowing, but because it is that complicated. We have dueling experts on both sides telling us about how a well-built, design-built facility will offer services of all kinds that don't currently exist, that will be very helpful to the people in need, and then we've heard from the other side that we are moving away from a model of large shelters and centralized facilities towards housing people, towards offering them support wherever they may live. And, you know, they're coming in just today, on both sides, all of which well-argued, principled comments, and yet they're on both sides. I've listened to feedback from my constituents, who of course are not directly affected, but try to understand the situation, both of the people who would benefit from this facility and the community in which it would be housed, and does not feel adequately consulted and heard up until this point in the ultimate proposal that came forward. Ultimately, I reached the conclusion that I need to vote against the official plan amendment and zoning amendments, and it really comes down to this. We are being forced here today, the testament to it is all of the well-meaning motions that we have just passed, to force the hand of the proponent to do the things that should have been part of their proposal in the first place. We're being required to vote on a technicality where we're not supposed to talk about people and socioeconomic impact, and yet we needed to pass all kinds of motions to make them do that, or to ensure that this is done. To me, that's the kind of thing that should have been part of the proposal, part of the consultation in the first place. So, if on a technicality, I'm not voting the way, or not voting on what's in front of me, I will do it anyway, because if by doing that, I can, on one more occasion, remind a proponent that it is your job to engage with the Ward Counselor, not for us to go chasing you, because we want to know what you're planning on doing. It is your job to come to us and tell us what you're planning to do, and we can save everyone a whole lot of grief by guiding you through a better process. We may not, in the end, support what you're doing, but people will be heard throughout that, and the meetings will not require us or the people in the gallery to sit through 180, whatever the final count was, presentations, because that will have already happened in some form or other. So, in the end, that's what it comes down to for me. There's advantages that will accrue to the people who will be served by this project if it is built. There are likely to be negative impacts on the community, in my opinion, as a result. Is it an even split? I don't know, but I do know that this came about in the wrong way, and we shouldn't have to be in this position of being the bad guy, either telling people who most need services, "I'm sorry, but I'm not offering them to you," or telling a community, "I'm sorry, I'm ramming this down your throat," if that's one way of putting it. And for that reason, I am going to have to vote no.
Thank you. Counselora McKenney, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I also sat through Planning Committee last week, all three days, and listened very carefully, and I have to say, it's, you know, it will go down as one of the more difficult decisions I've had to make this term of council, and, you know, perhaps that's the same for many of us around the table today, because we do have people who are homeless today and without any shelter, and without our shelter systems, they would have nowhere to go. And for that reason, you know, I've always supported the shelters, the shelters in my ward, I think of Cornerstone, which, you know, which is a wonderful space for women to be able to experience shelter. We have two of them, one in the evening is a short-term shelter, and then we have some supportive housing that they also offer. And it's, you know, it's ironic that we're having this debate and discussion today on National Housing Day, and we've got, you know, we know as a country, we are failing on housing, on housing people, but again, you know, a shelter is just not a house. If I go, if you go home this evening and you don't own the sheets or the pillow that you're sleeping on, or the bed that you're sleeping in, and if you don't have a key to get in, it's not, it's not a home. And it is easy to say, you know, "Well, we need shelters" until we build those homes, but the fact is, you know, and where I struggled on this one the most was on those extra 100 beds. And I kept asking myself, and I tried to get from staff, and I was asking the wrong question, actually, for three days. I kept asking about, "Are they shelters? Are they funded like shelters?" And I was told, "No, these are not shelters, these are program beds." And in the end, that's what's important, it's those 100 beds. Short-term shelters, the very purpose of a shelter is temporary accommodation in emergency situations until a person is able to return to housing. And too often, we hear stories of people who've lived in shelters for months or years. I remember hearing of a story of someone who graduated, got a university degree, living in a shelter, and I didn't think that that was a good news story. Nobody should be living in a shelter long enough to get a university degree, but it's happening, and it will continue to happen. And if we're building a 350-bed facility, when you walk into those first 140 beds, what are your chances of getting out before you go through all the programming? You are there, and it is not the way we should be housing people. We've got a federal government who, you know, we anticipate will be coming out with their national housing strategy, and that strategy will, you know, will not include increasing our shelter system. It will talk about things like, you know, rent supplements, fixing up the housing we have, building more affordable housing communities. So, I just want to, I just want to finish with just a quick story, and I told it the other day, but I think it's so important. Ottawa Community Housing is planning on building new affordable housing in the ward that I represent, and there will be at least this many, 300, 400, 500 affordable housing units, and we will be welcoming into our community, into our neighborhood, a large number of people who live in affordable housing, perhaps many of them out of the Mission, Salvation Army, Sheps, who will be living here, families. And when we announced that, the community that I represent was thrilled, they were so happy, because it will be a mixed-income, mixed-use, diverse, complex community, where everybody will have a fighting chance, at the end of the day, for their kids to prosper, for them to prosper. And when they go home at night, the housing that we will provide for them will be theirs. They will have a key, they will be able to walk in, they will be able to invite friends, and they will be able to call that a home. And that's what we need to be, you know, fighting for and working for, and for me, this is a bit of a capitulation of our responsibility. Thank you.
Thank you. If I could, I thank members of the audience for the respect you've shown. I appreciate the continuation of that, it's very much appreciated. Counselor Lieber now has the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And I don't know that any of us are going to change any minds at this point, but I do think it's really important to note that while the Chair of the Planning Committee and the Mayor have it within their prerogative to rule questions out of order and to guide the debates that we have, they cannot tell you on what considerations any of us here choose to vote. No one here can be instructed, we can only be advised. And you've heard advice from our city solicitor that you can't vote to exclude vulnerable populations from anywhere in the city, and I agree with that advice. But for the many of you who attended Planning Committee, you've heard similarly expert advice, that it is actually a responsibility and our obligation to do our planning on the basis of building healthy communities for everyone. The case law that I've seen bears this out, and I do prefer the expert advice provided by the residents' legal counsel on this point. We treat shelters as a standalone land use in our zoning bylaw, and they are not permitted on our traditional main streets. My assertion is that we make that distinction on the basis that shelters raise complex issues that have to be raised in a neighborhood and even citywide basis. I'm voting no today because the density at this site is inappropriate where it is so deeply embedded in the residential zone around it. This isn't what planners call an edge condition that we typically see on a traditional main street. There has been no sufficient case made, to my mind, that a shelter use is appropriate on a traditional main street, and I know groups like the Federation of Citizens Associations, all of our community associations are watching very closely to see what we're going to do to preserve the integrity of our TMs. The decision is being made within too narrow a framework. We have not been allowed to debate the various factors that residents consider we should. Residents can only come away from this debate confused. We've already amended this proposed bylaw with socioeconomic considerations this morning. We've determined that we need to talk about programming impacts and the interrelationship of those with site plan this morning, but we've been told that it would be indefensible to vote on the basis of how we're going to address homelessness and build a healthy Vannier moving forward. The hundreds of people who have engaged with us directly through this process, and the thousands of people who have been watching this process across the city deserve better, they deserve more coherent, and they deserve more caring. Colleagues, I hope that you'll join me in rejecting this application. Thank you, Chair.
Counselor Taylor, please.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. First, I would reiterate that to those concerned about ongoing engagement, I'd say that it's not the end of the discussion, I said that earlier, but this process shows every promise of having growing engagement and diversity from this point forward, both as a result of some of the council motions passed today and statements by the Salvation Army. Growing collaboration promises to be the path forward. It should have happened in the beginning, granted, it didn't, but I believe it'll be in our future. Emergency shelters are one part of the housing continuum, but they're an important one. Today, the federal government, as was mentioned, is going to be releasing its long-awaited national housing strategy, and much of what we believe and understand is going to be in there will address the causes of homelessness, in some cases poverty, addictions, mental health challenges, and the like. The social determinants of health are key factors in setting trajectories in our lives, and taking action to positively influence these social determinants is our collective responsibility in a community as governments, as social agencies, and as citizens. Notwithstanding our desire to gather around the task of ending homelessness by tackling the causes of homelessness, we must always realize that as long as there are people, there are going to be people who are homeless. Some of these people will need access to an emergency shelter, and we must respond to that need by ensuring that a shelter exists. Beyond this, we must ensure that the shelters are purpose-built, positive spaces where people move through the emergency stay program and into their own housing, supported by programming if needed, as quickly as possible. The proposed service hub has an emergency shelter component, it also has other programming and supportive spaces, like a hospital. The goal of a shelter, the goal of shelter staff, regardless of which shelter they work at, is to get people through the emergency room as quickly as possible. We wouldn't build a hospital without an emergency room, and neither should we build a service hub without these programming elements, without ensuring the presence of an emergency shelter component. Sadly, while we currently struggle with an opioid crisis playing out on the streets of Ottawa and the continued pressure we have as a result of the unexpected influx of refugees, one-day new Canadians, we must realize that there will always be the next crisis, the next pressure, the next need. Having adequate flexible spaces to respond to current and emerging needs is imperative. Not to allow a proponent who wishes to build such a facility to do so is naive and shortsighted. My hope is that we are collectively so progressive and successful in our work to address and end homelessness, that by the time this development is built, we are in a place where much of the work done there will be redirected to other services. To be clear, I support a housing-first model. I support moving people into homes, preferably by diverting them from homelessness to begin with. I also support, though, using every tool we have at our disposal. We cannot be too principled or too proud to say that we're going to leave tools aside or willing partners by the wayside in our collective fight to end homelessness. And that, Mr. Mayor and colleagues, is why I'll be voting to support this today.
Thank you, Counsel Taylor. Counsel Egli, please.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. I think we've all said it, and, but it bears repeating, that this has been one of the most difficult decisions that's been put in front of this council this term, without question, and I want to briefly take an opportunity to thank the people that have made it possible to have a discussion about this, an open discussion about this through last week. I want to specifically point out Chair Harder and Vice Chair Tierney, who guided the community, the city at large, really, through a very, very difficult three days of meetings. So, I want to thank them in particular for what they've done. I don't sit on planning, but I chose to go to those meetings, and I was there for the bulk of them, and I thank both the Salvation Army for meeting with me, and Drew for leading me on a site visit of the location and answering lots of questions for me. We had good dialogue on the street, though, Drew, if you remember, it was very cold that day. So, we asked our questions quickly and moved as quickly as we could, but I appreciate the engagement and the openness to have those discussions. And, you know, to, Counsel Taylor said some of what I wanted to say. You know, everybody in the room understands, acknowledges, and has respect for the issue that we do have a homeless problem in the city. I didn't hear anybody on either side of this say that wasn't the issue, but I do agree with Counsel Taylor that we should have a continuum of care, that one solution doesn't fit all, and this, I think this does it. I've always resisted the term "shelter" for this facility. There is a shelter component to it, without question, but when I first heard about this, before I started asking questions, I thought the Salvation Army was going to pick up what they had in the market, put it on the back of a truck, and drop it in Vannier. That's not what's happening here, as far as I can tell. And in making that decision, I just want to point out, in making that decision, I was particularly struck by the residents of Vannier who came out and spoke, and I thank you for doing that, and by the residents of our city that are recipients of the service that is provided by groups like the Salvation Army and the Mission, who talked about their personal experiences, showed a great deal of courage coming here and doing that and sharing with us. Dr. Turnbull and Wendy Muckel and Peter Tilly, who all work in this area every day, had a lot of very interesting and helpful things to add to the discussion. I also listened intently to Michael Pollan, and Michael had some very good arguments. Michael's a very good lawyer. However, I believe Michael would have been equally persuasive on the other side of the argument had he been retained by the Salvation Army. And why I say that is because Michael is a very good lawyer- And why I say that is because Michael is a very good lawyer, and he made a very cogent From a planning perspective, which is what we're supposed to be talking about here today, I want to thank in particular John Smith. John took the time to sit down and wade through the report with me and answer my questions. And some of the interesting things that he pointed out to me was, the term he kept on using was "context." It's about this location. It's about the uniqueness of this location, the depth of this location, that puts it in a different category than a location necessarily we've heard on Bank Street or on Preston Street. The depth of the current site provides opportunity to do something different there and provides a site that isn't what you would normally see along one of our main streets. At the same time, it does respond to the considerations that we do look at to determine whether a shelter should go: proximity to transit, high pedestrian traffic, a number of things that do quite firmly fit into the planning situation. I also want to point out that as much as I tried to, I couldn't get away from the fact that I felt that there was an element of people zoning going on. I'm not saying intentionally, but it was there. And we received a letter overnight from Ursula Melons, and I just want to quote from it: "The bottom line is that people do not have the right to choose their neighbors." And that comes directly from the Human Rights Commission. And that's, we can't choose our neighbors, but we can work with them, we can collaborate with them. And I hope, whatever happens at the end of the day, that that's the process that goes forward for this community and this social caregiver, that they do work together to come up with a solution that everybody can live with. Thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Neusbaum, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Because I sit on Planning Committee, I've had extensive opportunities to speak to different elements of this file, and I listened carefully to my colleagues and was particularly taken with the comments both by councillor McKennie and councillor Leeper, who I think have really encapsulated a lot of my views on this complex issue. So I am just, at this stage, I'm going to limit myself to a few comments on the planning rationale, because at the end of the day, and as councillor Leeper said, it both isn't about the planning rationale and it is about the planning rationale. We know that that's the decision that is before us, is whether we accept the advice from staff that we should be amending our official plan, amending our comprehensive zoning bylaw to permit a use that we, as a council, have decided is not a permitted use. And staff have advised that the reason why they are doing that is on the basis of three arguments. The first is that this is a relocation of an existing shelter. And I think it's important to note that that is not a planning argument. That is a piece of context, perhaps. Perhaps it speaks to the staff's arguments around the 2012 report or the 2008 report, but it does not justify amending our official plan or amending the comprehensive zoning bylaw. The second argument that staff want us to consider in looking at this application is the fact that the built form has been designed in a manner to mitigate land use and physical compatibility impacts. And when you read the report, there's a lot of focus, and councillor Egli just made mention to it, of the fact that this is a deep lot, much deeper than a traditional main street lot. The problem is, is it's a lot that backs up to a residential four-zone that also does not permit a shelter use. So while one can make the argument that this is, and it's absolutely true, a much deeper lot than we would typically see, we're talking about a built form that is essentially encroaching on what would normally be a residential zone site, which again does not permit the siting of a shelter. The third argument that staff provide in the report is the subject development does not preclude the ability for Montreal Road to develop in a manner that meets the intention of the traditional main street designation. And that's absolutely a statement that one can make. The problem is, it's a statement that requires evidence to support it. And nowhere in the, somewhere around eighty pages of staff report and comment in answer to residents' questions, did I see any consideration, any data, on why it was looking at the economic elements, the commercial elements, which are really at the heart of the official plan. The official plan and the comprehensive zoning bylaw speak of the fact that our traditional main streets are to be the commercial heart of our neighborhoods. And there was no evidence provided to support the statement. I would have been open to hearing that evidence, had it been offered, but it wasn't. And so we're left with three reasons to amend our official plan and our comprehensive zoning bylaw, which, in my mind, are unconvincing. And if that's what we're being asked to vote on this afternoon, now, notwithstanding the very valid and important social service elements that others have raised, but if that's what we're being asked to vote on, I don't think there's any other conclusion that we must defend the official plan, we must defend our comprehensive zoning bylaw, and we must be willing to consider a legitimate application to amend those when there is evidence that there is no undue adverse impact. And because there is no evidence provided that, and we know that the burden of proof is really on the applicant and on those who want to change our master planning documents, to demonstrate that, and that has not been done in this case, I really see no other choice in this case but to vote no on this application. Thank you.
Other comments or questions? If not, councillor Flurry, please.
I want to begin by thanking my community for coming.
Sorry, I think councillor Deans was going to speak, so we'll let you speak. Apologize.
Yeah, I just felt a need to say a few words on this application. Let me say, when the Salvation Army came to see me in June, when they had originally tabled their application, I was actually very supportive of the application because I recognize that although in a perfect world we wouldn't need shelters, our reality in this city is we do need shelters, and we need good shelters. And I think a purpose-built, good shelter is an important thing for us to have, and it's important for our most vulnerable citizens. And I care deeply about our most vulnerable citizens, and that's why this debate has been so frustrating for me, just so frustrating, because I think all of us should be putting those citizens in the forefront of this discussion. And I think as a community, we could do a lot better than we have done on this debate. This actually has sickened me, this whole debate, because what we have is an organization doing good work in the community for our most vulnerable citizens that come forward, and yet there has been no compromise along the way. There is a community that feels that this will have an adverse impact on them, that feels that this does not fit with the spirit of our official plan. And interesting, you know, they make some good arguments. Councillor Neusbaum made some great planning arguments that would lead to that. But at the end of the day, when you're trying to help your most vulnerable citizens, I think we do need shelter. I'm not convinced we need all of the beds that are being, and I'll talk about that a little bit in a minute, but I do think we need a shelter. But this, to me, has been a complete failure of process. There are no winners today. There are no winners. The Salvation Army may win this vote, but have they won the community? Anytime you divide a community the way this community divided is divided, this is not a win. This is not a win for any of us. This is not a win for the community. It's not a win for the Salvation Army, and I think we could do better. And that's why I've said to everyone, to the community, to the Salvation Army, to my council colleagues, to everyone, why are we here? Why are we here today debating dividing our community when we all want to help our most vulnerable citizens and we need to help them, when we need to find a way to do that in a positive way? Not this way. This is not it. Should we be allowing the Ontario Municipal Board to make a decision so important in this community? No, we should do it. And this is a failure of leadership. We have failed. We have failed this community by being here today, having this debate, and dividing this community. And I believe we can do better than we are doing by forcing this vote today. And that's why I actually really liked councillor Neusbaum's motion to have the city manager lead some sort of a group to try and find a middle ground. There has been no compromise here. There's been none. And that's not good enough. We've all failed, and we should all be trying to find a way to help our most vulnerable citizens. And that's what I really, really feel. And so it doesn't really matter how I vote, because there's no win to me in either side of this, in this argument. And I think we can do better, and I really feel that we should be trying to find a better way. You know, when Bob Shirelli was the mayor of the city, he used to say, "If we all get in the same boat and we row in the same direction, we can get it done." But we're not in the same boat, we're not rowing in the same direction, and we're not getting it done. We're dividing a community, and I just think that's terrible. So I'm not happy about it. I'm not happy at all how this has gone. In terms of the issues around the use, I think that housing and homelessness in Canada, in Ontario, and in this city is going in a bit of a new direction. And I don't think that the Salvation Army should expect that we will necessarily fund all of those beds, because I think, as councillor McKennie appropriately pointed out, we need to house people. We shouldn't be leaving them in the shelter. And if some of those beds could be better at housing people permanently, that's where our money should go. The shelter beds we'll always need, but I'm not convinced all of them. And so when it comes right down to it, how am I going to vote? And I honestly have been awake all night thinking about this, because it's not an easy decision for me. But I really think that we can do better, and for that reason, I'm not going to support the application.
Thank you. Does anyone else wish to speak before councillor Flurry? Anyone else? Councillor Flurry, s'il vous plaît.
I want to begin by thanking my community for coming in record numbers to the Planning Committee last week to present a united voice not to support the Salvation Army proposal. Vanye est fort et vanyé uni.
Vanye is strong and united, and whatever the vote is, Vanye will be winning. Remember, more far.
I want to particularly thank the Lower Town community for the maturity in coming forward in opposing the proposal to not replicate the issues that exist today in the Byron Market. The reason we are here is because a shelter is not permitted use on this proposed location. It is not a permitted use on the main street, and that is clear in our official plan, nor was it ever considered in the secondary plan for Montreal Road approved in 2014. It is a tragedy that this application came down to a vote of land use grounds, on land use planning grounds. We expect more from an organization that is in existence to help our most vulnerable members, funded by government and public donors. The applicant could have chosen sites that had the permitted shelter use, which there are many locations in our city. We then would have not found ourselves in this position.
Deciding to go ahead with the most costly and controversial and divisive solution is not good. It will require capital investments that are significant. It will cost a lot of money to the city year after year in order to support this model.
We've spent $4.6 million more to support shelters than what we had planned. This model is draining our resources and minimizing the shift to invest in a lasting solution: housing. As a government, I think it is important to be open and transparent and to be clear on where gaps are. Although we have housed 350 chronically homeless individuals in six supportive housing projects that are truly decentralized across the city, the reality is that more investment in supportive housing are needed to see a reduction in shelter use. When council approved the ten-year housing and homelessness plan seven years ago, many of you were around to approve the plan, and we knew full well that the goal was to decentralize and close our shelters. Let me remind us all of that implication. A closure of shelters to invest in specialized housing projects like those presented by the Mission and Cheps, who are decentralizing their services, the Oaks on Maryvale, Hope Living in Kanata, Life House in Centertown, the decentralization is towards new models. The closure of shelters was planned to be by attrition towards new decentralized services.
A vote against today's proposal does not show that we have any doubt as to the Salvation Army or their services. Institutionalizing a population is something that is serious. It's not just a zoning issue. It is clear that no plan allows this use on a main street.
Only 140 shelter beds is ruse, and it is insulting. A shelter, according to the definition, means an establishment providing temporary accommodation to individuals who are in immediate need of emergency accommodation and food, and may include ancillary, healthcare, counseling, and social services. The proposal at 333 Montreal Road offers exactly that: temporary accommodations. As it does not offer a home to individuals who would stay in any of the 350 beds to use the temporary nature, therefore, it cannot be under that category. Staff agreed with the important components from the 2008 report. Specifically, staff have agreed that there is a shelter cap of four shelters in Ward 12, and also the separation distances needed between shelters, page nine of the planning report. However, what they refuse to acknowledge is that there are 12 shelters currently in operations in Ward 12. There are two motels with city agreements for family shelters along Montreal Road, and there are six shelters for women fleeing a situation of violence. Not a single delegation spoke in favor of the project could explain why they thought the location on a traditional main street was the best approach. Yes, they were differing opinions on the model, which we were told was outside of the consideration of Planning Committee. However, nothing was presented that would justify putting 350 shelter beds on a main street.
My community is among the most vulnerable of other wards in the city. We all, we talk about demographic and economic diversity. Well, this is also needed on a social level. We have initiatives from Crime Prevention Ottawa which have helped, but we need to do more.
... of our communities. Vanye has worked hard to remove the stigma of criminality that it's haunted since 90s. The diversity is improving, but it is far from being on solid ground. Much attention and efforts are needed, and it begins with important attention to Montreal Road. My community is not afraid of welcoming social services, social services providers. We have many, including one of the eight supportive housing models recently built by the John Howard Society, to no opposition, might I add. Those were 42 men who came, 42 men who came from Shepherds of Good Hope. We are afraid that a community with concentrated poverty would jeopardize the healthy reintegration of individuals into active members of our city. Dear colleagues, soyez courageux. A no is not an end. It simply brings the Salvation Army proposal to a halt so that options in terms of location approach can be considered. My door has always been open, and my role is to work with the Salvation Army, work with the city, work with the community, and work with you to bring forward a solution supported by all. The status quo is a short-term option while we work through the collaboration with the Salvation Army on how to best invest $50 million. If you are homeless, what you need is a home. Sure, you might need the services that, but that doesn't mean that we should reinstitutionalize our most vulnerable in one location. Merci.
Thank you. The issue before us is an emotional one for both sides. It's clear that the people of Vanye feel strongly about their community.
It is clear that Vanye residents care a lot for the members that live in their community.
... that is done there. And all of these are important voices. Tout savoir sans empêter.
All these voices are important.
... the work we are embarking on in this community, including through the redevelopment and reconstruction of Montreal Road and the upcoming community improvement plan, and my thanks to councillor Flurry for his work in advocating for the CIP and the funds to redevelop Montreal Road. And it's equally clear that the status quo on George Street for these vulnerable citizens is not acceptable. The status quo de Centre L'Armée de cette.
The status quo on George Street is not acceptable for these vulnerable citizens.
170 delegations, many of whom were residents of Vanye, who spoke passionately and personally about their perspective on this application. Many of the issues expressed at Planning over the last week will be considered by the Community and Protective Services Committee in February, when they review the soon-to-be-announced changes to the national housing strategy and the city's 10-year housing strategy. I do support Housing First, and as the former minister of housing for the province, have been working with staff at both the provincial, federal, and local levels towards the goal of reducing our reliance on shelters over the long term. So like many of you, I'm saddened to see that we still need emergency shelters in the 21st century. But this proposal moves our city in the right direction as it contains a reduction of shelter spaces and at the same time... shelter spaces and at the same time, it creates a number of supportive housing beds.
As all of you, I'm disappointed that we still need emergency shelters, but this proposal puts us on the right path.
... from Inner City Health and Dr Jeff Turnbull from the Ottawa Hospital, quote, "The current bed capacity simply does not come close to meeting the needs and the provision of intensive treatment and care is essential to helping some men exit homelessness", end quote. You've heard from the former chief of staff, Dr Turnbull, that he believes in this model and the need for a continuum of care to meet residents where they are in their journey. Dr Turnbull was very clear, having many services under one roof is better for clients. They don't have the luxury of driving from one part of the city to the other for treatment or counselling.
As I mentioned, Dr Turnbull said that it's better to have access to all these services under one roof because they don't have the luxury of driving from one site to another.
It's harder to get to services or the more distance between services, the less likely vulnerable residents are to access these much-needed supports to help turn their lives around or in fact to save their lives. That being said, we must be clear that before council today is a planning application that must be addressed on sound planning principles to use of the land.
The application before New today is a planning issue that is limited to planning.
... what is before us. Eighty-five per cent of the site currently meets the zoning definition of a residential care facility and does not require council approval. Many delegations have raised the question of whether this location is the best location for this facility or whether there are other sites that are more appropriate. Respectfully, that is not the question that is before council. Every organisation, for-profit or not-for-profit, has the legal right to ask the city for a zoning change. It's up to the planning committee and council to assess whether it's appropriate to permit this 800 square metre shelter on this specific site. Our professional planning staff have prepared a report recommending the application be approved based on their review of the Planning Act and the city planning process.
Any organisations has the legal right to ask for a zoning change at the city.
Social service agencies and councillor Fleury mentioned a number located in all parts of the city and we have not micromanaged their site selection process through the planning approval process. Agencies such as Cornerstone Housing for Women in Somerset Ward, the Oak Centre in River Ward and the Shepherds of Good Hope in Kanada South. The committee's decision on this matter must be based entirely on planning principles and not on considerations about social housing policy, the efficacy of shelters or how this facility might be funded in the future.
Decision has to be made only according to planning principles.
Building is designed in a way that can be flexible and can change as the community's needs evolve. There are many steps before the Salvation Army could even start construction. Appeals period, site plan approval, operation requirements and many ongoing consultations with the community. These have all, they have also, excuse me, agreed to form an advisory committee on site plan and programme issues as this application progresses through the next phase of development and I believe most members of council, if not all, supported that motion earlier today. They've also agreed to introduce an ambassador programme to help build strong relationships with the surrounding community. I have listened to discussions on this matter and support the staff recommendations based on planning principles.
I have listened to the discussion on this topic and I support staff recommendations based on planning principles.
It's also a significant improvement over the motel which currently sits there and already provides 14 rooms to residents as overflow shelter capacity. I feel that the co-location of supports on-site will mitigate the land use and traffic impacts on the community. The focus will be and continues to be finding permanent housing for clients rather than merely an emergency overnight bed.
Our focus for these vulnerable citizens would be to find a stable and sustainable housing and not just a bed for the night.
... expressed feelings of fear and again, I'd like to quote Wendy Muckell from Inner City Health, quote, "I have often been afraid for the men that we serve, but I've never been afraid of them", end quote. I encourage the community to engage in the site plan process to help ensure their feedback can be integrated into the final design. This type of community engagement has been very successful in the past. I hope that this application is approved, that we will work together with all neighbours in Vanyer so that everyone's needs can be accommodated. I also do not support the status quo option of delaying our responsibility as members of council to make a decision on the application to some date far in the future, 100 days or so. On December 13th, 2017, if council does not make a decision, the applicant has the automatic right of appeal under Ontario law to go directly to the OMB. To defer our decision on this item would be evading our responsibility as elected officials.
I do not support the decision to, or the proposal to put it off to another date. This way, we would not be responsible as elected representatives.
... that we have, we must consider this application on planning principles and in relation to our planning policy and Ontario law. We heard lots about property values and stores thinking of leaving if this proposal goes through, while I emphasise, are empathised with these concerns, they're not valid land use planning considerations. The current Salvation Army was an old school, never designed to be a shelter.
The former establishment is old school and it was never built for emergency services.
... walks in on the streets, this new site will be the first purpose-built shelter of its kind in Ottawa. It will provide a space with an interior courtyard for clients to meet with friends away from the surrounding neighbours. Today, I'm asking council to support the Salvation Army's plan, a plan that provides better housing options for our most vulnerable residents and a plan that has been developed by a not-for-profit organisation that has been helping the less fortunate for over 100 years.
Today, I'm asking council to support this Salvation Army plan that will help our vulnerable citizens.
For years in the 1990s, I volunteered at the soup kitchen at the Shepherds of Good Hope. Every Tuesday, I would see what appeared to be an endless line of men, women and children coming in for a warm meal in the shadow of our peace tower in a prosperous city like ours. I often thought to myself, what was worse, a person starting their life in a soup kitchen as a child with parents or coming to one near the end of one's life? I realised that neither was acceptable in a society like ours. This is not an easy issue for any of us. I appreciated the emotional attachment to our neighbourhoods and I'm appreciative of the delegations who have expressed their points of view. Yet lost in all of this are the many men, young and old, who need our help and our understanding. Please know that with the vote today, the discussion does not stop. We will continue the important dialogue at the Committee for Protective and Services Committee in the new year and I hope that you stay involved in the policy funding and social service issues that by working together, we can find housing options that work for all residents.
This is not an easy issue for anyone and I appreciate everybody's contribution, all of those who came to express their voices.
... committee for their work and in particular Chair Harder and Vice Chair Tierney, who handled the meeting with great skill, compassion and thoughtfulness. Madam Deputy Clerk, the roll call please.
Yes.
Councillor Brockington.
No.
Councillor Taylor.
Yes.
Councillor Deans.
No.
Conseil Fleury.
No.
Councillor Dourous.
Councillor Cadri.
Yes.
Councillor Harder.
Yes.
Councillor Wilkinson.
Yes.
Conseil Cloutier.
Oui.
Councillor Egley.
Yes.
Councillor Moffat.
Yes.
Councillor Blay.
Yes.
Councillor McKenney. Conseil Manette.
Oui.
Councillor Shirelli, councillor Midic.
Yes.
Councillor Kakish.
Yes.
Councillor Chernyschenko.
No.
Councillor Hubley.
Yes.
Councillor Neusbaum.
No.
Councillor Tierney.
Yes.
Councillor Leeper.
No.
Mayor Watson.
Yes.
Sixteen yeas, seven nays.
Thank you. The next item is committee reports number 13, Office of the Auditor General, report on audit follow-ups and detailed audit follow-ups. Councillor Shirelli had asked, councillor, I believe councillor Hubley had a point. If you'd like to speak. Yeah, councillor Hubley has the floor, please.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. Just want to thank our auditor general, Mr Hughes, and his staff for their work on this report.
So I believe councillor Shirelli had a question, but it was answered by the auditor general, councillor Hubley. Thank you. Next is item number five, City of Ottawa participation in the National Capital Commission's, yes, that was received, Capital Commission's commercially confidential negotiations for the redevelopment of La Breton Flats. I believe councillor Neusbaum had a question. Councillor Neusbaum, the floor is yours. Alright, so if we could ask you to speak up, councillor Neusbaum.
Okay.
Sorry, councillor Neusbaum, did you have?
Yeah, I have questions. I just, they're to staff, so I just, I'm just waiting for the sound to...
Okay. So the last item, just for clarification on the auditor general, that was received. Agreed? Okay, councillor Neusbaum, the floor is yours.
Okay, thank you, Mr Mayor. Yeah, just some questions on the staff report. And for reference, I'm looking at page 21 of the staff report. Under principle two, city taxpayers must be protected as part of any agreement in principle, which is a principle that I completely agree with. And I just wanted for clarification to ask a few questions of staff. So in the first part of this section, staff outline the fact that the city has a number, a limited number of financial tools available to it to encourage development, including the Brownfields Development Programme, development charge exemptions and special area levies. Are there any additional financial tools that staff would add to that list that they think would be part of any discussion with the city and the proponent?
Mr Canacus or is Miss Similant, please?
There are no tools that I would add to that list at this point in time. The constraining factor is the municipal act, which does not allow bonusing for commercial operations.
Okay, so lower down in the section, there's mention of the proponent possibly requesting to use the city's borrowing authority. So does staff consider that a form of financial tool?
It is a form of financial aid, but it has, can only be given under very limited circumstances. So we're not aware of what the circumstances would be at this time, so it was just identified. But as you know, we're not allowed to provide loans to commercial organisations. We're only basically in the business of providing financial support for municipal services.
Okay, thank you. The final sentence in this section, again, is one that I think is the right one. It says, "It is further understood that any obligation or potential liability that the city might agree to take on would need to be secured by assets or mechanism to recover the cost from the benefiting area." Just a couple of questions on that. So a special area levy is ultimately paid for by taxpayers. So is that, am I to read that last sentence to say that if there was a special area levy which was part of any agreement in principle, that any proceeds from that special area levy would be subject to that final sentence?
Under the community improvement plan, you can have a special area levy which basically says if you build something of a municipal purpose that builds up the area, the incremental taxes that you receive go to pay for it. So that would be the construct that we're talking about here.
Okay, so you wouldn't interpret that to mean that that type of contribution would need to be secured by assets or mechanism to recover the cost?
As the asset that it would be paying for would be a municipal asset, it would need to be secured in that way. But if there was any other request for financial assistance in any way, it would have to be secured with an asset.
Okay, thank you, that's helpful. And then in terms of the development charge exemptions, which is listed as a possible, a limited number of financial tool, we know from the development charge bylaw that DCs pay for increased capital costs required because of increased need for services arising from a development. So if there are exemptions to any potential development charges, I presume since they then create a liability for the city, that they would also be subject to the principle expressed in the final sentence, correct?
Right now, you actually have the ability to exempt development charges, but what that actually means is then you pay for them. So the city, when we exempt anybody from paying development charges, we make up the difference. So there is no liability there in that respect because the city has to step in and make up the difference.
So I guess a development charge exemption is either, I mean, thinking about the definition, it's either an obligation or potential liability, yes?
Yes.
Excellent. So that would be captured, a development charge exemption would be captured by that final sentence in that principle, which is very helpful. Thank you.
Yes, it would.
Councillor McKenney, please.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. As the city councillor whose ward, La Breton Flats falls into, I've had discussions with, actually met on-site with the local Member of Parliament, who's also the Environment Minister. And I've also put out a letter to the minister and had some discussions about, you know, some of the things that we want to make sure that we see as we're moving forward on La Breton Flats. So, but I do, you know, I guess my struggle here is two things. Just back to the development charge exemptions and what that could mean for the surrounding If we, in the end, decide that we're going to exempt on development charges, those impacts for the surrounding, the immediate community and, you know, the broader city is, can be profound. I mean, we've got, I don't know, stormwater systems, we've got needs for, I don't know, transportation infrastructure, we've got certainly needs for recreational facilities. And up until now, all I've ever seen is some recreational facilities that would be provided by the private sector, but certainly there's a lot of public infrastructure that we're going to need to see as a result of a redevelopment of La Breton Flats. So I just worry a little bit about the possibility of development charge exemptions. And it's the part of the report that really prevents me from supporting it in terms of one of the principles that we will provide to, at this point, the mayor and the MCC to look at going forward.
So councillor, let me provide you with some comfort around that. Because right now, if you provide any exemption for that, for the development there, the city has to step in and make up those development charges, which means the programme of growth that is supported by development charges is not diminished as a result of that exemption. What you're doing is you're substituting development charges with taxpayer dollars. But at the end of the day, you still are raising the same amount of development charges that supports your growth programme. So nothing, and this Mr Willis can talk about, when you accept a planning, an area for planning and all the infrastructure has to be built with it. We don't allow a subdivision to come up and not have roads and not have sewers and not have water and not have stormwater. All of those things go with it. So the fact that you would exempt it does not actually delay any of the growth programme that is supported by development charges. What delays your growth programme for development charges is when growth doesn't happen. It's because we aren't receiving the DCs, not because you are giving exemptions, but because growth overall has been down from what we had forecast. because growth overall has been down from what we had forecast. So I want to assure you, giving an exemption is not going to actually impact on the growth program, because the city steps in and makes up the difference.
So becoming a subsidy from private to public, essentially?
That is what exemptions are, yes.
Yep. And then on the principle, like, of the borrowing authority, and I understand that we're not necessarily going to be offering borrowing authority to, you know, for better interest rates, but if we do, is there some way that we could ensure that, at the very least, we're doing green bonds again? This is an area of the city where we should be showing that we want to build the most sustainable and environmentally sustainable community in the city.
So depending on what the borrowing is for will determine whether, in fact, you can use a green bond or not. If it is for investment in light rail, or for state-of-the-art stormwater facilities, those are all things that would qualify for, most likely for a green bond. But if we're using it to build roads, chances are, it won't qualify.
Well, hopefully, we're not going to be putting forward any, you know, providing any borrowing authority for roads at this place. So I have concerns with the report in terms of the scope in what we're allowing the conversation to happen in behind closed doors.
We don't, Counselor, this is just a broad-brush report, sort of looking at all of the things that could potentially be available. We don't know what they're going to be asking for at this point in time, but we don't want to have to come back to you if something gets raised that we haven't put in the report and don't have any direction on. So there will be full reporting once the negotiations have started and we come to a point where we think we may have a deal. We have to come back to you and get your full endorsement on it anyway. This doesn't limit your ability to reject or approve in the future what we would come forward with.
Counselor, anything else? Okay, Counselor Lieber, please.
Thanks, Chair. And I think you will hear some tentativeness around that previous reply. By the time something is agreed to in principle behind closed doors, bringing it back to city council, it's going to be very difficult to push back at that. I do want to get some precision and clarity around something that both Counselors Neusbaum and McKenney have raised. On the matter of development charge exemptions, if we were to extend those, is it your intention or not to ensure that there is a cost recovery mechanism so that they do not become a subsidy to the developer?
At this point in time, I haven't figured out a way to do that. Right now, you have built into your budget an allocation of $6 million a year, which is what you typically provide for exemptions in a year. So if you were to do more exemptions, but you wanted them recovered, I'd be hard-pressed to find a way that you would recover it, other than through incremental taxes, which, at the end of the day, is the same thing as having it in your budget.
So, and forgive me, take me through that. Are you suggesting that they are entitled, then, to certain development charge exemptions?
At this point in time, no, they're not.
Do we have discretion as to whether or not to extend it to any particular developer?
Yes, you do.
And is it, what, am I hearing, then, that there is open-mindedness on the part of the city's negotiating team to extending development charge exemptions as it's negotiating with the preferred bidder and NCC on this property?
No, we're not. But there may be, they may ask for it. We're not offering it.
So if they ask, what is our preliminary approach?
We would have to do an analysis of the value of what they're asking for, and the benefits to the city, and the trade-offs. At this point in time, I can't tell you whether we would say this is a good deal or it's not a good deal. It's all part of a package of things, and I can't commit to you that we would be in favor of it. We would need to look at the impact overall.
But that doesn't seem to be the case, for example, with respect to Brownfields or borrowing authorities. You've already signaled your approach on that. Why are you not signaling your approach on DC exemptions?
At this point in time, they haven't asked for DC exemption.
At this point in time, have they asked for Brownfield?
We know they're aware of the program, and we would expect them to ask.
So do we expect them to ask for DC exemptions?
I can't speak on their behalf.
Okay, so it sounds, forgive me, it sounds a little bit cagey. I'm not sure why, when we're talking about our preferred approach on Brownfields, our preferred approach on borrowing authorities, we would very specifically set out at the beginning that we'd only contemplate those on a cost-recovery basis, but we're unwilling to do so on a DC bylaw. That sounds a lot to me like we're making sure that the door is open to extend DC exemptions to them. Sorry, Mr. Willis, you wanted to jump in?
Mr. Mayor, the, it's not cagey at all. It's actually, you need to look at all the components of the deal. It's a very complex deal. It's been compared to Lansdowne. I think it's going to be more complex than Lansdowne. There are a lot of moving pieces, and there'll be a lot of requests, and there's a lot of issues financially and otherwise that have to be dealt with. And as the GM of Corporate Service, our Treasurer, just said, the whole thing has to be looked at in its entirety. When they bring us a proposal, we'll see what is the best deal for the city, keeping within these principles. So we have a principle on number two, which effectively says that city taxpayers must be protected as part of any agreement. There might be some parts of it that we're giving and some that we're taking, but ultimately protecting the taxpayers. So to answer the question about a specific component right now is actually impossible until we see what exactly they're going to come with in terms of putting together what works for them in terms of their financial proposal, to make sense from a business case. And then we'll respond based on what works for our taxpayers to keep to this principle and ensure we can bring something back to council that we believe council will accept.
I, forgive me, so just one more time, it seems inconsistent with our very clear signaling in this document about how we're going to treat certain types of requests.
Mr. Mayor, I'm sorry, but I have to disagree with that. It's not inconsistent. We have principles here that we can live within, we can negotiate with, it gives us enough room to bring a proposal. And as we said, we won't be making any final agreement. It has to come back to council for approval. And to me, no door is open here to give away the farm. Let's see what they bring back, and we have a duty to protect our taxpayers, and we're committed to that.
Shifting gears, the role of the local ward councillor, and I include myself tangentially there since I border right on the property. This development will have a significant impact on the neighborhoods of Centertown, Dalhousie, Hintonburg, Mechanicsville. It's going to transform those neighborhoods. Now, I absolutely understand that no one particular councillor should be at the table with veto, with any further influence than others. But in the wake of, let's call it some offline discussion on this point recently, it looks to me like the local ward councillor is deliberately being kept out of the loop. I'm looking for some assurance here that there will be a flow of information to the local ward councillor on issues of concern to the ward.
Mr. Mayor, the ward councillor respectfully is not deliberately being left out of the discussion. In fact, the outcome of the committee was that the mayor and myself would be keeping the ward councillor informed of progress as it moves into the planning component. Mr. Willis also made a commitment at the end of Fedco that he would keep the ward councillor or councillors who are impacted informed as we move away from the land settlement and the federal government negotiations that are happening with the proponent. As we look at the financial model that we'll move into as part of these principles, we'll be quickly moving after that gets settled into how does this unfold as a planning effort. And at that point, Mr. Willis has made a commitment that the ward councillors and whoever's affected will be kept informed as per our normal process of a development.
So, Mr. Mayor, if I may add to that, the types of impacts that the council is referring to, the sorts of things we would think about in any major redevelopment application such as built form, transportation, circulation, other mobility systems, the public open-space system, access to public amenities and facilities, and community facilities throughout the site are all in the purview of the land use planning process under the governance of the planning committee. So there'll become a point at which this will transition from a council-wide decision related to a broader deal to a land use planning applications and the like, and that would then trigger us back to our usual processes where there's a considerable amount of involvement with the councillors. And as the city manager committed, I've also committed to Counselor McKenney, and I'll commit to you as well. If there's meaningful information on those things as we go through the earlier stage, I will make sure you're briefed.
Okay. Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. Mayor? Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor.
Counselor Wilkinson, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Actually, Mr. Mayor, I have questions for you. Mr. Mayor.
Okay, go ahead.
I heard you say in the past that you are not in favor of paying for the Brownfields on this site, that the NCC, since they own the land, should be selling it clean, as we would do with our own land. Have you made any progress on that?
Well, I raised the issue yesterday with the NCC Chair and President, and reiterated the position that was going forward as part of this series of recommendations to give the city manager and myself a mandate to negotiate that we truly, I hope you agree with me, that the federal government made an historic decision in the 1950s to demolish that part of the city, and it's been sitting vacant and has contaminations on the site. And because the federal government is the owner of the site, they should take responsibility for the cleanup of the site and not the city's Brownfields fund. So I very much believe that. I've discussed it with a number of federal officials, and they have not rejected that claim, because it is their land, and we believe that they should be responsible for their land before it's developed.
I take it there's no legislation that says that a person knows their land is contaminated, does not have a right to sell it with its contamination?
Sorry, I didn't hear you.
Is there any legislation, either provincial or nationally, that would say that if you have contaminated land that you then pass on or sell to somebody else, that you are actually responsible for cleaning it up first?
I don't believe so, because in fact, there have been pieces of land, I believe, over the years for LRT that we have purchased from the federal government, and it's been our responsibility to clean them up. But there's nothing that says that it has to be done by the federal government. But as you know, our Brownfield Rehabilitation Fund is relatively small portions of dollars that have been handed out in the past to kickstart the projects, I think of West Hunt Club Road and Council Eglies Ward. But I truly believe that the federal government is going to sell or lease the land as part of this redevelopment and revitalization. It should be taken care of before it's passed over to the new owners.
I absolutely agree with you, and I think that the, this would be very much more expensive than what we've been doing now if we had to. The other one is, I know you have said many times that you do not want this to cost any cost to the city, and that they should follow all the regular rules.
Sorry, Counselor, it's, the noise out there, if you can just speak into your mic a little louder, it's very hard to hear.
Can't get it. The, you've said that you don't want this to cause cost to the city, this development, and that they should follow the normal rules. To my mind, that would think they dedicate any land for parks, we wouldn't be buying it. That they would pay for the construction of new roads within the development, as other developers have to, and sewers, et cetera, except for the oversizing, which we have obviously a policy on that type of thing. And that development charges that we use for paying for those things like oversizing, et cetera, as we do in the other parts of the city with this new development. This basically is almost like a greenfield development, just because the land is completely open and cleared up. It's not as if it's a redevelopment in the normal sense between two different buildings or anything. I just want to, I know you're going to have some, a lot of discussions on this, and I completely support the report in going forward in that way, but I just want to know that you and the staff will be doing everything possible to make sure that they follow the same rules, the same regulations, cover the same costs as anybody else would, and that we wouldn't burden the city with additional costs, which I don't think at this point in time we can actually carry.
Yeah, I think in fairness, though, Counselor, this gives us a bargaining mandate to go forward. I don't think it's appropriate we get into what we're going to agree to and not agree to even before the mandate has been approved, or we've had a sit-down meeting with the proponents in the NCC. So certainly, it's very clear that one of my objectives, as is stated in the document, is to protect the Ottawa taxpayers, and that will be a principle that I will continue to hold throughout the negotiations. And my hope is that we're able to find an amicable agreement, primarily between the NCC and Rendezvous Le Breton, to revitalize that particular part of the downtown core, because as you know, we have a significant transit investment with two stations, the LRT at Pemissee and Bayview, and it's in our collective interest that those stations be busy with activities throughout the site, not just the arena, but the affordable housing component and other components that will bring more people to the western edge of the downtown core. So I think you can appreciate the fact that, I don't think it's appropriate we start the negotiations here, showing our hand, if you will, because I think it's important that we have an initial sit-down meeting with the proponent to determine what they're looking for and to let them know what we're prepared to do to protect taxpayers and at the same time revitalize that part of the city.
I recognize they're going to be doing things, but I think the principle is that it is a new development, and it shouldn't matter where in the city a new development is going. The rules should be roughly the same. There may be occasionally a few special things that come up, but it's, even in the case of Lansdowne, I know that we have foregone a lot of tax revenue to get that development in place. That was one of the things that was negotiated very well, because I was involved with the financial negotiations on that particular one. And it was a concern of mine from day one, that we are, it's fine to say they won't have to, it'll be paid for by the tax revenues of the new development, but that new development also has costs that we have to carry for a lot of things, like security and roads, et cetera. And if you do that with everything, then a few taxpayers will pay for everything. So I'll leave it in your hands. I know you have the right objectives in this, and that you're going to do the best you can for the taxpayers. I think it would be helpful if they got some periodic reports back to us on how things are going in the past, and confidential briefings even, so that it doesn't at the end come as a big surprise.
Yeah, this is a, you know, it's not a couple of months process. This is sort of a year and a half. There's a lot to deal with, and we have to first and foremost have the NCC and Rendezvous Le Breton reach some kind of agreement. There's no sense in us starting to negotiate until they have an agreement in principle with respect to the land, and then the ball falls in our court to start working on it. So I appreciate that input, and we will, you know, update council on a confidential basis as the process unfolds.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Cadre, please.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor, and thank you for the update that you just provided to Counselor Wilkinson. My concern, Mr. Mayor, is and has been that through this whole process, I agree with you, this is a lot different than Lansdowne Park, because there's another piece to this process, the other piece being in the West End, as to what happens over in the West End once they move. I mean, up until now, we've been talking about what happens, what happens at Le Breton Flats when they move out to Le Breton Flats. But one thing I do want to caution everybody on is not to forget the West End, the Kanata-Stetson area, because the impacts of them moving are going to be there, and I want to make sure that any funding that is provided through the city, if any, to them is also reciprocated in reverse for Kanata-Stetson area, because there will be some, you know, effects in that area, both economically as well as needing some of that funding in order to replenish what we're losing. So just want to keep that on the back of your table to make sure that that, as the negotiations go forward, that that issue is discussed also.
Yes, I think, thank you, Counselor, for that, and I certainly give credit to you and your colleagues, Counselors Elshin Tiri, Wilkinson, and Hubley, because that is a big economic generator in the West End, and we certainly have raised it, at least I've raised it on two occasions with Eugene Melnick and with the Senators Group and Rendezvous Le Breton, because while it's not part of the Le Breton proposal, it has direct implications if the arena moves downtown. So I've certainly kept that very much in mind, and we need to find what is going to fill that very significant void if the arena is constructed downtown. So thank you for that. Counselor Cadre, please.
Thank you again, Mr. Mayor, for that, and, you know, I agree with you that it's good to have it in the discussion. But for me, the comment that you just made about it not being part of the Le Breton discussion, I think the whole piece is one piece. You can't separate the two. Le Breton is a different discussion versus the West End, to me, is another discussion that should be part of that process.
Yeah, and, you know, from a broad perspective, I agree, but the information before us or the recommendation before us that the NCC have asked us to engage in is really only the Le Breton rendezvous agreement. But I, as I said, I've raised on two occasions with Mr. Melnick and the Senators Group at your behest, the fact that we've got to come up with a solution for your behest, the fact that we've got to come up with a solution for what will be a big economic loss for the West End. So I certainly, you know, it won't be the formal negotiations, but it will be, in essence, an ancillary item that we have to continue to pursue because that, you know, that is an important part of the economy and job creation in the West End. So, you know, I hear you loud and clear, you've been very persistent with me and keep prodding me, but I want to find a solution for that as well. It may be, you know, in a parallel process that we operate with, but it's not part of the NCC agreement that they're trying to reach.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments?
carried. Sent by Leaper and McKenney. Well, why don't we have yays and nays then? Yays and nays, please.
Councillor Elshantiri.
Yes.
Councillor Brockington.
Yes.
Councillor Taylor.
Yes.
Councillor Deans.
Yes.
Conseil Fleury.
We.
Councillor DeRouze.
Yes.
Councillor Cadri.
Yes.
Councillor Harder.
Yes.
Councillor Wilkinson.
Yes.
Conseil Cloutier.
We.
Councillor Egley.
Yes.
Councillor Moffett.
Yes.
Conseil Blay.
We.
Councillor McKenney.
No.
Conseil Manette.
We.
Councillor Shirelli.
Councillor Middick.
Councillor Kakish.
Yes.
Councillor Chernoshenko.
Yes.
Councillor Hubley.
Yes.
Councillor Newsbaum.
Yes.
Councillor Tierney.
Yes.
Councillor Leaper.
No.
Mayor Watson.
Yes.
Twenty yays, two nays.
Okay, thank you. The next item that was held, Smart City 2.0, Ville d'Intelligente 2.0, I believe councillor Leaper had a question.
I did, thank you very much, Chair. This is a subject that I am very, very interested in. A couple of quick questions for staff on this one. I think some of it more philosophical than specific. Bear with me while I pull up my notes. So I am looking at a couple of items in here, sorry, bear with me. Open data, open city, digital by default, open by default. There is some really interesting principles, I think it's on page 327 of the version of the report that I have. There are two key themes, one of which is that a smart city is analytics-driven with responsive operations, and the second one of which speaks to intelligent infrastructure. And underneath key theme two, it speaks about having an open data catalog that is free for use. I'm looking for some comfort from staff that if we're going to truly be a smart city, that we are looking at making sure that everything that we do is digital by default and that it is open by default. Because when I take a look at how the data that's created by various sensors or the various things that we have is going to be used, I'm looking in key theme three at a number of sort of prepackaged products. We're going to take the data and we're going to create interfaces for it that citizens will then be able to use, which is interesting, but it's not a smart city. A smart city puts that data in the hands of residents in as raw a form as possible, machine-readable data that they can manipulate themselves. When it comes to open data, to what extent are you thinking about making sure that it is everything that we do? Steve is pointing.
Mr. Mayor, so the open data is a core piece of the smart city strategy, and absolutely, councillor, we're totally in agreement in terms of the approach that we need to do moving forward, so much so that when we went through the organizational transformation, we recognized that for us to really move forward in a digital and a mobile and a smart city, we had to invest in data analytics capability, data capability, and develop some expertise in the organization around how we pull all that data together and make that both available to the market to develop solutions for us, but also to develop it in a way that individual residents can use it as we move forward. So in the transformation, we created an entire group that is building capability and data analysis expertise to be able to guide us in that. And they've started to do that this year with the introduction of, again, another number of data sets. But they're moving beyond just the data sets to look at what do we need to do into the broader organization from both a policy, capability, and tool perspective as well? Because we've got some work to do in terms of just even the development of our data that goes beyond just back into our backend systems into the systems that create and capture the data. I'm going to pass it to our Director of Service Transformation, Mr. Marc René Decotre, to talk about, who owns now that in his department, to talk about the plan moving forward on the data analytics strategy.
We've done a number of things over the course of the last, I'd say, six months around the open data. As you may be aware, we are moving forward with releasing another 15 data sets this year, and will, that'll bring us our total up to close to 165 data sets available. We're also pursuing the open data, Open 311 API, which is releasing a number of service requests. We just went live with another 70 service requests today, totaling 90 service requests, which makes up over, I think, 90% of our online volume now that's completely open, again, to try to spur innovation out in the community around the open data 311 API, so allowing two-way communications to happen now directly into our environment. And we're also completing a data analytics strategy that also covers things like a data policy to accelerate data sets moving forward and being able to offer more and more data sets publicly. In 2018, we're going to add visualization tools to our open data sets, similar to what you may have seen with Edmonton or with municipalities like Boston that are really at the forefront of open data. So we're aggressively pursuing that in 2018 as well.
And I'm interested in hearing more on the policy side. It strikes me as councillors that we are too often having to go to Mr. O'Connor to say, there is information that residents want, and when we seek it, we are being told no by staff because I think bureaucrats, and I was one, and I know exactly how they feel, tend to want to control information. They tend to worry about the ramifications of having information get out into the wild. What are we doing to ensure that our open data policy is supported by a culture of open by default?
Mr. Mayor, the policy, you're right, councillor, will be one piece, and we'll be looking at that policy and also the release plans that we will be developing in terms of the data sets that we're going to release out into the community. So we plan to do that on a progressive matter, where we're looking at what does the community want and being responsive in terms of how do we enable that in the departments to move forward. As part of the entire digital strategy, we are looking at how do we not just focus on just the open data, but how are we building that culture of innovation and data and information across the organization? You'll see that as a key piece of the strategy when we come forward in the new year, and it will start with us as our leadership has made a commitment in terms of our digital strategy for that to be a key piece that we start to look at in order for us to be able to really develop solutions that are going to meet the needs of residents. So it really will be a three-pronged approach that will be a key component of the strategy in the new year when that comes forward.
Okay, and that's going to be coming forward to council?
Yes, that is correct.
Fantastic. There is another piece in the smart city strategy which I'm very, very interested in, which is options for low-cost broadband. Explore broadband as a utility. That is probably the most interesting statement, a couple of words in the entire piece. Can you talk more about what you're thinking on that front?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. I mean, it's interesting, we had a discussion with our long-named Right-of-Way Heritage and Urban Design Group the other day about what's the role of a right-of-way in the city, and that's the land in between what's privately owned on either side of the road and occupies. And we now believe that our new philosophy is that the right-of-way represents the space used for traditional utility, water, sewer, stormwater. It's used for mobility, which we now view as multimodal. It's used for energy now, through our smart, through our energy evolution project as part of our energy distribution system, and it's for data movement as well. That's the role of the right-of-way. And on top of that, we have the public realm that the public sees. So we're broadening how we understand the right-of-way to function, and part of the strategy involves ensuring that we're getting out of the way where we can to ensure that we enable it, as long as there are no conflicts between the other purposes of the right-of-way. And also, as a department, we're going to be measuring the level of rollout, availability of broadband across the city. And one of the proposals in the new year is we'll establish a group who will advise us on a minimum standard we should be targeting as a community for that.
One of the, some of the language I did not see in the report, though, is that as we're looking at broadband as a utility and exploiting our right-of-ways is competitive neutrality. Earlier in this term of council, this council chose not to support our small ISPs. Thankfully, federal cabinet made the right decision on that one. What is your view on competitive neutrality as we take a look at priority within those very crowded right-of-ways, whether it's conduits or on poles?
I think that it's not a short answer, so it's something I'd like to talk further offline to get a better understanding of what you mean by competitive neutrality, but I know that by the way the CRTC regulations work today, where other federal regulations work, we have to be effectively neutral in terms of our offering of the right-of-way, provided there are no conflicts with other utilities and functions within the right-of-way. So if I'm not answering the question right, perhaps I need to spend more time to understand what you're saying.
Yeah, it's well worth an offline conversation. Congratulations on coming up with this strategy. I'm looking forward to engaging with it further down the road. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you, Councillor Conseil Fleury. So we play on the side of.
Merci beaucoup.
Thank you very much.
I also want to commend the staff on the importance of the investments in technology and in smart cities. I think the more data we have, the better it is, the more decisions, the better decisions are made, and also after that, the better our response can be as a city. So to me, it's a win-win-win. I just, I want to speak to a matter that too often we hold on to legacy programs in the various departments, which to me are continued weight of these strategies. I want to highlight also different levels of behavior, and I'll highlight two very measured ones. One which is, I'll use the pothole example. So pothole comes into 311, makes its way through to Kevin's group, who makes the, who then prints the copy, assigns it to the office, to whoever's going to fill that pothole, and ends up being a physical copy. And I want to applaud the work of Ottawa Community Housing in that front, where that was a very predominant issue at Ottawa Community Housing, and we were able to close that loop by removing the paper trail. Everyone had the technology tools they needed onsite where they needed it, so that it wasn't, you know, a manager who was closing a file, it was actually the person who had done the work. So that to me is one. The other one that I know Mr. Manconi's struggling with is technology's evolving. Technology's evolving around us, people with the data that we provide, they invent apps and so on, it's great, let's keep that up, and let's make sure the information we provide is accurate. The big gap in my mind is we're stuck with the old legacy, we're still printing the old sheet of the buses at the bus stop, and things continue to evolve. So we also have to be front-facing in that challenge with technology so that we can make a cohesive shift. So again, I applaud the strategy, I just, I wanted to highlight two very, you know, in a sense, two gaps that we have that I think reflect a bigger challenge that we have internally. Thanks.
Great, thank you, councillor Hubley, please.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. I just, I want to echo my colleagues and thank Mr. Willis and Ms. Gray for their work on the strategy, as along with councillor Harder and councillor Tierney is one of the sponsors for the smart city. It's been quite an educational journey to learn where we're going with this, but it was also, Mr. Mayor, very exciting to see how much the city's already doing in this area with a number of great initiatives on how to save taxpayers money yet provide better services. So I want to express my support publicly for your efforts today and stay with you as we carry through. Mr. Cantaluckes, thank you for seeing the wisdom and the potential savings in embracing smart cities, and hopefully we can move towards making this a term of council priority next term. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Great, thank you, councillor Hubley. Other questions on the item? On the report, carried. Council will now resolve in camera to consider a number of collective bargaining matters. Councillor Kakish, seconded by councillor Taylor, please introduce the motion to resolve in camera.
Be it resolved that the rules of procedure be suspended to permit the deputy city solicitor and staff to brief council and receive direction with respect to collective bargaining mandates for the following bargaining units: ATU Local 279, Paratranspo ATU Local 1760, and Ottawa Professional Firefighters Association. And be it further resolved that council resolve in camera pursuant to Procedure by Law 216-377, subsection 13-1D, labor relations or employee negotiations in subsection 13-1F, the receiving of advice that is subject to solicitor-client privilege, including communications necessary for that purpose with respect to the above noted collective bargaining matters.
On the motion, carried. We'll take a five-minute recess before moving in camera. I'd ask that the room be cleared, and that staff who do not need to be present, please leave the room as well, and please remember to bring all of your belongings with you as you exit. And I believe Commissioner Crewe is here on behalf of, and Martilla Hartman as well. So if they could take a seat, and we're recessed for five minutes.